Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second meeting in April. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated April 15, 2021, which is properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Okay, thank you, and could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton? President Fox?
Here. Okay, moving on, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30 and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated April 15, 2021, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda, and please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature, and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. And lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session for April 6?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to reports. Our first report is from our mayor. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. The Summit Citizen I program is an essential registry for police detectives to use during investigations. Over the weekend of April 10th, seven homeowners provided video footage from their surveillance systems, enabling officers to efficiently gather critical evidence for an arrest that will be used during the trial. Please consider letting the Summit Police know if you have a video security system and if you are willing to share footage if needed. More information about the program is available at thecityofsummit.org/polic. Next, I have an announcement regarding my Board of Education appointments. This year, we are saying goodbye to Josh Weinrich and Peggy Wong, who served very ably and gave incredible amounts of their time in the last three years for Josh, five for Peggy. And I am grateful to their service. It was invaluable. Michael Cologne has served three years. He will be, I am reappointing him, for another three-year term. And then I have two new appointments. As you know, I've said many, many times, it's very important to me that we discuss with the Board of Ed and with other members of the community and the council, what the Board of Ed needs. I've talked about this for years. What kind of skill sets? What's, what's, where are they weak? Where are they strong? What is the ethnic background? And also the geographic background in their communities in the five elementary zones? So I am appointing two women. Walida Justice, and Walida is, lives in, well, she works for Kent Place School. She's the head of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion at the school. And she lives on the campus grounds, has a child at the high school, and two younger children in the district. I am really looking forward to having her work with the district focusing on some of the serious issues and programs that the district wants to enact over the next years. And the other person I'm appointing is Melanie Cohn, who also lives in Summit. She is the Executive Director of the Summit Visual Arts Center. So consequently, obviously, she has an arts background, but she's also running a fairly large nonprofit, which gives her strong business credentials. And when she, before she moved to Summit, she lived in Brooklyn and served on a Board of Education in Brooklyn. So she does have that background as well. When I spoke with the Board of Ed, they told me they were very confident and comfortable with at least three people who are currently on the board who have strong financial background. And that's always something that we look at. Because while we have great faith in how the district is run financially, one of the main jobs of the Board of Education is financial oversight. But they were looking for something that was a little different. And so I'm very, very proud to announce the appointments of Melanie Cohn, Walida Justice, and Michael Cologne. And they will become effective in May at the reorg meeting. And lastly, it has been an eventful few weeks for us as a community. Members of council, city staff, and I have heard from many citizens on a number of issues, large and small. From people who live in the area near where there was a terrible and very scary abduction of a young woman. Protest by parents over the current quarantine periods for sports. Support for and opposition to the gas-powered blower ban. I always appreciate hearing from everyone, including those who have directed their anger, vitriol, and accusations toward the governing body and police and health departments. My decision-making and support is not and never will be rooted in politics. I am the mayor of every citizen in this community. I care about you and your family, and I work every day with council, staff, and city agencies to make Summit a healthy and safe community. I want school to resume full-time and sports to continue without fear of transmitting COVID-19. I want our children to play safely outdoors. But I will not make health and safety decisions political. Our exceptional health and police departments have my full support, and I will follow the expert advice in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now moving on to my colleagues for the administrator's report.
Council President, I think you'll hear enough from me over the next hour, so I'm going to defer to you and your.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of quick things. The Earth Day cleanup was this past Saturday, and more than 150 volunteers picked up litter, pulled weeds, and helped to maintain trails at nine sites around Summit. Thanks to the leaders and members of Cub Scout PAC 301, Boy Scout Troop 67, the Brayton and Washington School Girl Scouts, and the Summit Garden Club, who helped the Environmental Commission with this annual Earth Day cleanup. There's a long list of people to thank, but I think in the interest of brevity, since we are on to a very long meeting tonight, I think I'm going to just say a big thank you to everyone who participated. Secondly, the Summit Free Market returns on Saturday, May 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Due to COVID restrictions, item drop-off and shopping will be by appointment only. Summit residents will be able to sign up for a 30-minute time slot beginning at 12:00 p.m. on Monday, May 3rd, on the city's website at cityofsummit.org. The Free Market will be held on the second Saturday of each month, and appointments will be, will continue until pandemic restrictions are lifted. In the meantime, residents can join the virtual Summit Free Market group on Facebook, where items are shared by contactless porch pickup. So that's all I have for the reports. And now we'll move on to our police chief, Andrew Bartalotti, who is going to give a report. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mayor Raddus, Council President Fox, members of Common Council, and members of the Summit community. I am pleased to be able to speak to you this evening. Understandably, the abduction of a 19-year-old Summit woman on Saturday, April 10th, has caused a great deal of anxiety and uncertainty in the community. As a parent, I fully understand your distress. And as your chief of police, I work every day for the benefit and safety of the community. It is a priority of the Summit Police Department to provide for the health and safety of all citizens and share as much timely, accurate information as allowed by law and at the discretion of the Union County Prosecutor's Office, who is the lead prosecuting authority in this case. This remains an ongoing criminal investigation. The dissemination of case-related and inaccurate information on social media may compromise the ability of the Prosecutor's Office to successfully prosecute this case. Maintaining this case's integrity is essential to ensuring that justice is served. This is why I am limited in what I am able to share with you tonight. Continuing public speculation, complaints, and conversations on social media also have an adverse impact on the victim and her family, and that includes mentions of sharing of video recordings of the abduction. I think that we can all agree that preserving the victim's emotional welfare is a shared priority for this entire community. Therefore, I ask that the public address its concerns and fears without focusing on particular details of this young woman's nightmarish ordeal. Through the incredible bravery and clear thinking of the victim and swift mobilization of police officers and detectives, the perpetrator was immediately identified, put under surveillance in a neighboring location, and was no longer considered a threat to the safety of the community. The suspect was arrested without incident and charged with first-degree kidnapping. He currently remains in custody at the Union County Jail. In this case and many others, the Police Department considers a balance test when determining what message to broadcast. Situations that pose an immediate or continued threat to public safety will outweigh other aspects of an investigation. As it was in this case, when the immediate threat is no longer present, it is the welfare of those involved and the integrity of the investigation that guides the message. Messaging on the day of the incident was intended to advise the public of an increased and prolonged police investigation in the area. If there was a threat to the safety of the community at any time, an alert would have been issued immediately across every channel available to us. Detectives with the Summit Police Department will continue working in conjunction with the Union County Prosecutor's Office for several months leading up to the prosecution of this case. As with any investigation of this magnitude, the follow-up investigation often results in additional details and items of evidentiary value that become critical to a successful prosecution. With overwhelming cooperation from the community, which I remain extremely thankful for, critical video evidence was collected and has led to build a solid case against the defendant who has been ordered by the Superior Court to remain in custody. Thank you to everyone who reviewed their home surveillance system footage and contacted us immediately. I would like to highlight the following points. I have been asked about the surveillance resources that are available to the Police Department. I can report that the city does have video surveillance equipment and license plate reader technology at various points throughout the city, and we always look to add more when the budget allows. For security reasons, we do not publicly disclose the number of units or their locations. We have heard an idea from some residents about permanently closing the end of Fernwood Road near 124. The New Jersey Department of Transportation has designated Fernwood Road as a primary arterial roadway to a state highway. As such, any action which places an impact on a state roadway does require the approval of the Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Transportation in accordance with DOT procedure. I have heard from residents on the north side that neighbors are collaborating on developing a digital neighborhood watch group to afford residents the ability to remain in contact with one another. Additionally, the Police Department is looking at updating the neighborhood watch signs throughout the city to indicate that cameras are being utilized for surveillance. These are good steps in deterring crime. Another way that you can help detectives to officially, excuse me, to efficiently investigate crime is to enroll in the Summit Citizen I Registry. Having a comprehensive list of all homes and businesses in Summit with video surveillance capabilities will establish an essential resource for the police to use in investigations. Please go to cityofsummit.org/polic to sign up. And I know you have heard me say this multiple times, but locking your vehicles when unintended will deter crime. Residents are also encouraged to secure their homes, as there has been a recent trend in the region of suspects entering homes through open garage doors in search of keys for vehicles. As you may know, in 2020, we logged 33 stolen cars, all with keys left in the vehicle. So far in 2021, we have had one car stolen from a residential neighborhood, and the key fob was inside. We have also seen four unlocked vehicles entered so far this year compared to 56 in 2020. We continue to collaborate with all of the schools in Summit on personal safety for children. On Monday, Detective Sergeant Ryan Peters of our Community Services Bureau and liaison to the Summit Schools filmed a PSA on safe behaviors and how to avoid dangerous situations with strangers. We continue to develop programs with the schools and value the strong relationship we have with district leadership. The video PSA will also be shared on the City of Summit YouTube channel and will be accessible for all. I am thankful for everyone who reached out to me with your questions and concerns. Your involvement and your willingness to engage in a dialogue with the Police Department is a large part of what makes this community a wonderful place to live and work. In my recollection, we have not had a crime of this type in our town. But terribly violent crime has occurred in neighboring areas. This is why it is essential to remember that we do not live in a bubble and that we do need to lock our doors of our homes and vehicles. Parents, please continue to talk to your children about personal safety, reminding them that they should let a trusted grown-up know immediately if someone they do not know tries to approach them. In closing, and to the men and women of the Summit Police Department, I appreciate your effort, your diligent work, and your quality of work every single day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to open it up now for, for members of the public to, to make comments. I'm going to, because we have a large number of people here this evening, I'm going to limit it to three minutes per person. And I'm going to, when the three minutes are up, I'm going to ask you to finish your sentence and be done. You, when you're called on, when you're recognized, you can please state your name and your address. If you're reading from a written statement, if you could please provide it to the clerk at our licitise@cityofsummit.org. And we're going to start with, so what we're going to do is take comments and questions, and then after that, council members will have an opportunity to speak. And then if there are any things that need to be addressed at the end, I'll, I'll call on Chief Bartalotti to answer those questions or comments. Okay, so, so let's get started. Our first person, Delia Hamlet, go ahead, Ms. Hamlet.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Delia Hamlet. I've been working with the residents of Fernwood Road since the incident. I would like to discuss escalating concerns within the community related to recent criminal activity, and I think it would be a mistake to marginalize the significance of these events. I've been meeting with the mayor, the chief of police, and Marjorie Fox as one of the representatives of the street where this occurred. The facts are that the first piece of communication was on Saturday, April 10th, at 5:26 p.m. It read, "The police are canvassing Witridge, Fernwood, and Woodmere for ongoing investigation into suspicious activity. No cause for alarm." My kids were on the street at this time, and the alert seemed inaccurate. I would like the information, and I would like to decide when my children need to be in their homes. This was not a black bear. This was an abductor, not an attempted abductor, an abductor. Later press release from Union County Prosecutors on Sunday, April 11th, cited that police thwarted an attempted abduction. As our neighbors vigorously scoured our videotapes, we quickly determined this was certainly not an attempted abduction. It was an abduction. And as public records have already been obtained by many of our residents, this woman was manhandled, put into a car, and thrown into a trunk. Thank goodness our officers acted quickly and expeditiously. This was a violent crime and the worst in a long time. Unfortunately, many residents heard nothing all week. There was no communication from our school board to our parents and children. I'd first like to say I'm one of the biggest supporters of the Police Athletic League, and I think our officers and detectives and sergeants are the best that there is. I had an opportunity to meet with Chief Bartalotti and Detective Zaborski this week, and I think we had a really productive meeting. I think everybody should be aware that crime is up, and we are down 10 to 15%, down 10 to 15% since the highest number of police personnel that we've ever had. If you don't think we need it, you should check out recent criminal statistics from Union County and beyond. If you think there's anything more important than having your child being thrown into a car and being abducted, you should be ashamed. I think, as Mayor Rada said, we should have the decency to put politics aside and make our community safe again. As we would say in the military, this is all hands on deck. We have become a soft target. It is time to take our streets back. So this is what we're going to do. We're not going to complain. As concerned citizens, we have developed something called the Summit Safety Initiative Committee. Our email address is summitsafetyinitiative@gmail.com. This is run by and for residents. I spent a week talking to residents about how we could make this better. A few months ago, a few members of the north side created a text stream for criminal activity. I applaud the women who started this. It has been great. But we have found that due to recent events, we are recommending an enhanced approach towards safety measures and communication regarding safety. The main objective of this committee would to be develop systems to meet current challenges. We have already started working on the new Neighborhood Watch app, and we have been provided resources from Summit citizens that have been donated to accomplish this goal. When we are complete, each resident street can determine if they would like to be a part of the program. If you are new to town, you will receive a QR code with information regarding your street and an option to join an app. Imagine an app that can request your block captains to have someone check out your camera angles. Imagine an app to have all of the resources you need to make your home safe and communicate with your neighbors. This will also allow senior citizens who don't have the appropriate technology to make a safe home. We saw a lot of that this week, a lot of scared senior citizens. I've asked the police chief to provide us a liaison.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please. Your three minutes are up.
I've asked the police chief to provide us a liaison, and I think working together is going to make everyone safer. We really want the blotter to be every week. We want more information on the blotter, and we want timely and accurate information. Most of the residents on the north side have already identified their block captains. Please email us if you would like to be in charge of this program, and we hope to work closely with the town to make this a successful innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlet. I'm going to just caution folks that, that this is a very sensitive topic. There, you know, there is a victim who's been traumatized. And I know that you're trying to, to force the gravity of this situation, and we are all aware of that gravity. But I would ask you, please, not to rehash the dramatic details of what have happened. I know it's, you know, it's something that we're all tempted to do, but, but we are aware of it, and I think it's only harmful to the victim and potentially prejudicial to any prosecution. So please, you know, please observe those, that request, and I think we'll be, we'll do well with that. So I'm going to move on to the next person whose hand is raised. Lisa Glassband, go ahead, Ms. Glassband.
Thank you so much. My name is Lisa Glassband. I live on Fernwood Road, and the abduction of the 19-year-old that the chief spoke about happened in front of my home in broad daylight. Less than an hour before the incident, my children ages 10 and seven were playing outside. It keeps me up at night to think about what might have happened had my kids been outside at the time that poor girl was accosted and kidnapped. It was a terrifying scene, I can assure you, and the reality is that she could have easily been any of our kids. I wanted to speak this evening to implore this council to take action. I'm sounding the alarm on behalf of myself, many of the residents in and around Fernwood Road, but more importantly, our children. And not just the children that live on Fernwood, but the scores of other kids who walk along Fernwood and the surrounding streets every day, especially amidst a pandemic where kids are just trying to be kids and enjoy some outdoor time with their friends. The criminal activity around Fernwood has escalated over the years due to the fact that criminals have become increasingly aware of the unmonitored direct access to Route 24 from Fernwood. Fernwood offers criminals a speedy exit before police even have a chance to respond. Crimes here started with break-ins and thefts, then home invasions, and now an abduction. What's next? A speeding car thief racing down Fernwood and, God forbid, hitting one of our children? The longer we fail to address this security issue, the more we become a target. That's a fact that's proven itself with the increased criminal activity in our area. While it is critical to strengthen communication between law enforcement and the community, I, along with many other residents, think an important part of the solution is to close access to Fernwood from the county access road. Criminals exit easily off Fernwood to direct access to Route 24 much more easily than any of the other access points on that service road. Barricades and signs should be posted immediately and access cut off, even if only temporarily, so we can see how it impacts the community. Specifically, I believe it will decrease crime and have little, if any, impact on emergency services and traffic patterns. Critics may say that closing Fernwood Road, the Fernwood Road intersection, won't matter because criminals will find another way out. My retort is, while this certainly will not remedy all crime, I believe it is highly likely to deter the most serious crimes, the home invasions, the abductions, the premeditated crimes where criminals plan in advance the quickest exit strategy. If you take Fernwood out of the equation, you make it far more difficult, and in my view, you remedy a huge vulnerability given Fernwood's mere feat to the Exit 24 on-ramp. I'd like to leave you all with just one final thought, please. Two years ago, it would have been unfathomable that this town would permit the closure of Maple Street in the center of town to accommodate outdoor dining. But it happened, and rightfully so. I supported it to satisfy people's social inclinations and to allow people to feel a little freer amidst a pandemic. But based on my research, no traffic study was conducted. This council went to DOT, and within 30 days, it got it done because it was the right thing to do at the right time. Given what we were able to accomplish so quickly on Maple, no one can tell me that it's impossible to temporarily close off access to Fernwood. If we can temporarily close roads in this town to quickly accommodate our social lives and promote our local businesses, we surely should do the same if it helps us better protect our kids. Shame on us if we value our social lives more than we value the safety and security of our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Glassband. Are there any, we've got one other person, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Good evening, Mayor Raddus and members of council. I'm Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue, Summit. First, I would like to thank Aaron Schreger of the DCS for his attention to the vegetation issue.
Mr. Bennett, we're only speaking right now on, on Chief Bartalotti's report.
Oh, my apologies.
So we'll get to you in the public comment period afterwards, okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment or ask questions right now about Chief Bartalotti's report? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the chief and Aaron Schreger to talk briefly about Route 24 and the Fernwood Road access, if you wouldn't mind. I don't know which one of you wants to do that first.
Director Schreger, would you like to take that one?
I can, yes. Thank you for you, Council President. So there's several laws that govern how and when we can close municipal-owned roads, and those fall under NJ SA Title 39 as well as Title 40. And the city does have the right to close roads for less than 48 hours for a various number of reasons that are detailed in those laws. So any additional closure would require the approval of. So any additional closure would require the approval of NJ DOT. In this particular instance, if the city was to pursue a closure in excess of 48 hours of Fernwood, being that it does connect to a state road, that would further require approval from NJ DOT. So in brief, to summarize, an engineering report and traffic report would be required to submit to NJ DOT to obtain the commissioner's approval for the closure of Fernwood Road in any capacity longer than 48 hours.
Thank you, Director Schreger. Chief Bartolotti, is there anything else you'd like to add on that? Or should I open it up to council members' comments at this point?
We could defer to councils.
Okay. So do I have any comments from mayor or council? Councilmember Little, go ahead.
I just wanna speak. I've gotten a lot of emails and comments this week as well, along with the mayor and I think everyone on council about this incident. This is also my neighborhood. I walk on Fernwood almost every day. My kids, you know, often walk with me, so I certainly understand the fear and concern that have been expressed to me by a lot of my neighbors. I just wanna speak and kind of reiterate some of the things that you've said because I do have some insight into the other side of this as a former criminal prosecutor, and particularly a criminal prosecutor that worked with victims. I was a sexual assault and child abuse prosecutor, so in all my cases, I dealt with victims who have been traumatized by the events of the crime that I was prosecuting. And I wanna sympathize with everyone who wants more information and was frustrated with the lack of information. And I just wanna say from the other side that often, although we know that that would make everyone feel safer and and that it would be, you know, everyone, everyone wants that to make decisions for their own kids, there are often other competing interests that are in play that prevent the police and our town communications from doing so. I don't know any of the details in this case, other than the rest of the public. I haven't asked for them. I don't feel that I'm entitled to them. I have the same details everyone else does, but I can say from my own prior experience with cases, there were times when we couldn't give information because we were still investigating a case, that we were investigating other incidents that the perpetrator might have committed, and we didn't wanna, you know, we couldn't muddy the water, where we had a victim who was very fragile, either emotionally or because of age or because of language, where we were really concerned about things getting out about the victim and that victim being reluctant to testify or cooperate further. Often in cases of trauma, the victim needs to be interviewed multiple times and in different situations to get the full story. There's all kinds of factors that go into this. And so I just wanna tell people that when you're not hearing details, it's not, it's often the case, and again, I don't know any details of this particular case, but it's often the case that it's not because the police aren't doing a good job communicating or they don't wanna tell you the details of the case, but it's because the public safety is the primary concern, and then you really have to look at the rights of the victim and the, you know, the way to successfully prosecute so that the public safety can continue, and details are shared with the public as it's appropriate. So, you know, I share your concerns. I live here, too. I'm worried about this, but I just wanted to give some background on that and and present the other side, that there's, it's often more complicated and and not as clear-cut as it would maybe seem if you were not, you didn't, you didn't have privy to all the information that the investigating agencies and the victims' rights advocates have. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Mayor Rata.
Thank you, Council President. Obviously, this is a tremendously concerning and was an horrendous event that traumatized a resident, a fellow resident, a fellow citizen in our town. So I am, first of all, very grateful to the residents who have come forward to help, obviously to our police detectives and chief for their quick work, and of course, to the young lady who who was very, very bright and brave in her activity. I am very happy to hear Delia talk about the Summit Safety Initiative. I think that a strong Neighborhood Watch is an important thing, and I would love to see many neighborhoods in the community get engaged. If we're all aware of what's going on around us, then we make everyone safer. So I think that's really important. And as for Fernwood Road, I know we have to work with the state. And one thing to just keep in mind, a difference between Maple Street and Fernwood is that Maple Street had no intersection with a state or a county road. It was, it's all related to city streets, so that made it just a little bit easier. But this is something that I think we're willing to look at. We ought to, and at the end of the day, we don't get to make the final decision, but we have ways of working through the system and seeing if we can get to a resolution that's satisfactory. May not be, may not be satisfactory, may not be able to close Fernwood, but I think it's worth looking into. But I do applaud the community, the Neighborhood Watch, and I'm glad that our officers are going to be looking at our signs and make them more clear to everybody who watches TV and knows that cameras are everywhere. So, thank you, thank you, and we'll get through this. Like many things, we'll get through this.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Naiden.
Thank you, Council President. As a dad, I wanna say a couple of things of two teenagers, because I think I understand the fear, the anxiousness, the concern, like most of the members, I think, on council, who are also parents and who know this experience for themselves, what it means to hear something like this. So first, I wanna say my heart goes out to the family and the victim, but this must be so horrible of an incident that I can't even imagine for them to deal with. But as a dad, I know that people, when they get very concerned, wanna be able to do something. You don't wanna feel helpless. You wanna be able to do something that will make a difference. And I'm glad that people are talking to the police department, because I think we have a great police department. And it's not because I agree with every decision at every time that the police department makes. Nobody does that, but it's because they have earned our trust as a community. This chief has, this department has, they come through in caring about how we live, and our safety is paramount to them. And so I'm glad that people are coming together to speak in a dialogue with the police department to come up with solutions and ideas and having a thoughtful discussion and trying to figure things out that will improve the situation. I will comment, as I've done now, on a couple of occasions, probably more than a couple of occasions for those who listen, on the role of social media. And the chief mentioned this, and I will reiterate, that social media has its place, but it does not have a place as a replacement for dialogue. And it's certainly on situations like this, which are so serious, it does not have a place for people having the ability to share very detailed information. The first instinct that you should have, I would recommend to everyone, is that if you know something, call up our police department. Talk to them. Share the information. Make sure that what you have, maybe you suspect something, go and talk to them rather than posting something on social media. I saw a social media post, something about gang tags, and I talked to the police chief about it, and I don't, he can say if I'm wrong, but my understanding from him was that was an inaccurate post. And that type of posting does not help the situation. It just doesn't, folks. So I am very glad that the people who spoke tonight spoke about how they were trying to think of solutions to this issue, because the safety of all of our kids, all of ourselves, is critical to each one of us, and we certainly, I think I speak for all of council, the mayor, the city staff, take it extremely seriously. This is nothing that we simply will brush over. We will look into this. We will think about it. We will look at options, and we're here for you guys. So that's my message. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naiden. Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank the police chief for a very thorough report. I, too, was alarmed when I got the NICSOL message, and since I monitor those, it did raise questions, and I guess I have been lulled into a a sense of security, knowing that police decisions are really excellent here. And one of the things that I want to make sure we address is a perception, and I need the chief to speak to the accuracy of an increase in crime in Summit. That has been raised before, and it's a perception. It is not an accuracy. And I want to make sure that we manage fear in a way that doesn't put others at harm and making our children afraid to walk down the street when these things are not as common as they are, can appear. And so it is not to minimize the severity of it, but I do want us to use balance in terms of what is the most awful thing that can happen is for something, for people to lose sight of when something is really serious and when it's blown out of proportion. And and so I want us to make sure we're giving the chief the opportunity to report to us. I heard an ask for a more common blotters. That isn't what I'm asking for. I know the chief, who loves data like some others of us, will know when trends are happening, and he has solutions in mind. But I also want to not let the sleeping elephant stay for those folks who call the police on people they're not familiar with and don't think they belong in their neighborhood. And that kind of fear is also doing harm. And so I want to not let that go unspoken.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Chief, would you like to just address the crime trends? I think you alluded to it with the car thefts at the beginning, but if you'd like to just address that briefly, that would be great.
Sure, Council President, thank you. Yes, as I reported, we are track, we track car thefts and car burglaries predominantly, as that is what is being seen as the increase throughout the region and has been so since the start of the pandemic. And if you recall, back at a council meeting at the end of 2020, I believe it was in October, I gave kind of a position of where the city was in terms of the crime trend, and alarmingly pointed out that motor vehicle theft and theft from unlocked motor vehicles was significantly high in the past five years in the city and significantly high, not only in surrounding jurisdictions, but the region of this area. And when I speak about region, we mainly talk about the Union Essex Morris County region and then and then above from that in terms of the geographic of the state. That has been tracked throughout the state for quite some time. It is still increasing, and what we're happy to see is, as we've been tracking that since we've been pushing out messaging about locking your vehicles, statistically, what we're seeing is that the crime trend in that, those particular areas is decreasing in Summit, which is a very good thing. And I attribute that to the fact that community members are listening and heeding those warnings of locking vehicles. But as the summer months approach, we don't wanna get lax there, because we did see the spike in the summer of 2020, with our highest number of vehicles in the year being conducted between the months of June and September. So as we quickly approach the summer months, we do wanna be vigilant in keeping everything closed. As far as rise throughout the city, rise of crime throughout the city, what we're doing is we're looking to enhance our technology efforts, as Councilmember Hairston pointed out, to do a lot more with our GPS technology in mapping out crime, not only within the city, but also mapping it out with our partner agencies in the surrounding towns, the five towns that border Summit, and see where crime trends are happening. We do know that in the region, again, we are seeing an increase in suspects entering unlocked homes, as I reported earlier, in search of vehicles in the garages that are left unlocked with keys in them, or even we've had a couple incidents as close as towns neighboring us, where suspects have gone through open garages and into open doorways leading into kitchens or pantry areas, looking for keys for vehicles. And the worst thing that can happen there, aside from having somebody come in your home, is a confrontation, and that's certainly what we all wanna avoid is any confrontation. So I think being vigilant is important. We are going to work internally with increasing notification, as was pointed out earlier in terms of the blotter. And Ms. Hamlet, she was correct in saying that when she met with Captain Zaborski and I yesterday, that is one of the things that we talked about, and historically, the police department has always published their blotter on a monthly basis, and we saw no reason after discussions with Ms. Hamlet and internal discussions why we couldn't adjust that and change the way we've always done things and get that information out possibly on a bi-weekly basis. So that is what we're looking at, along with a lot of other various crime trends, but I do wanna put out to the community that you are safe, and we do understand that, as information helped in this particular case, it brought a lot of the what-if questions. What if, what if this happened an hour earlier when my children are on the street? What if this happened tomorrow when my kids are out of the street? Are they safe? And I wanna reassure the public that you, your families, your children, the entire community, you are safe. You're doing a good job. We appreciate everything that you're doing in terms of heeding the warnings that we're asking for, communicating with each other, reminding each other to take these steps, but recognizing, as I pointed out, that Summit is not living in a bubble and crime is around us in this state, and we gotta do our best to deter it. The one thing we will never know is how many attempts on vehicles or burglaries or thefts from vehicles that members of this community thwarted in the sense that we deterred that crime. We don't, we don't monitor how many criminals walk up to cars and check door handles, but what we do know is that criminals throughout the region and in partnership with other agencies and video surveillance that was teamed, we have seen these individuals going driveway to driveway checking door handles. And what we are seeing is that if a door handle to a vehicle or garage doors closed is locked, they are moving on to the next home. And the concept is, if we continue to be vigilant, eventually, and hopefully, they'll be tired of coming to Summit, and they'll go to another jurisdiction. And then if every jurisdiction around us and every community around us continues to take that approach, we will drive that criminal element further and further from our, from our area.
Thank you, Chief.
Council President, if I may, I'm sorry. I just wanna make sure I don't forget to touch on what Councilwoman Hairston stated with regards to calls for service that come in. We also do wanna remind the public that following situations like this, where emotions are high and fears are high, there is a tendency, an understandable tendency, to look at everything and anything as suspicious, including vehicles driving down the road that you may think are not part of your neighborhood or don't belong in your neighborhood, or people walking through your neighborhood that you may feel don't belong there, or even contractors. We've had calls as recently as the day after of suspicious contractors in the area. Understand that the police department will respond to every call for service that we get. What we are asking the public to do is that when you do call us, provide our dispatchers with as much information as possible to support the content behind why you are calling us. If there is a suspicious person in your neighborhood, it is extremely helpful for the responding officers to know in advance what it is they are responding to and what activity that particular person is doing that makes you feel they are being suspicious. So you will be asked more questions when you call. We certainly don't want you to refrain from calling and just communicate amongst members in your neighborhoods, but at the same time, we don't wanna be calling on individuals that are visiting our city, which which happens all day long, every day. This is a vibrant community for not only residents and people that work here, but extremely for people that visit here as well.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Varte.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanna very simply say thank you to you, Chief Bartolotti, and to the women and men of the Summit Police Department for three things. The first is the swift action last weekend. The second is the the manner in which you're communicating this evening. the manner in which you're communicating this evening. And then the third is the way that you're working together with the residents, the schools, and neighboring agencies in the prosecutor's office. Thank you all very much for the way that you all keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to thank Chief Bartolati tonight and the Police Department. You guys are amazing. I wanted to thank Lisa and Delia for calling in. I really appreciate her initiative, the Summit Safety Initiative. At the end of the day, it's a trauma. It's a trauma for the family and it's a trauma for the community. And working, I've been so impressed over the last 12 years living here in how the Police Department has focused on community policing and, and working with the neighborhoods to ensure our safety. And so I just, you know, I think that Neighborhood Watch is, is a great strategy. There's, it's easier to have a lot of eyes on a situation than, than less. So, and I just want to emphasize the, the ring and signing up. I think some people were initially fearful of that because when you sign up for the ring, they thought that automatically there's a surveillance. But this is an option for the neighborhood to submit something in a situation like this. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Anyone else have comments? Okay, thank you so much, Chief, for your presentation. It was, it was very helpful to learn what was being done. It's, it's very reassuring. And I just want to urge everyone in the community that, you know, to please communicate with us if you have concerns. We do care and we do want to hear from you. So with that, we're going to move on to the long awaited budget presentation. City Administrator Rogers, go ahead. You're, you're muted, Michael.
Okay. I think I'm good. Okay. Did you want to go to the, the public portion first before I do the presentation? Since that will be a little lengthy or?
Yes, we could do that if you.
Yeah, I recommend that.
We'll take things out of order then. Okay. So now we're going to move to public comment. So at this point in the meeting, we'll welcome comments from any member of the public on issues that are not a topic on tonight's, on tonight's agenda. And again, I'm going to, because we have a lot of people here and a long agenda tonight, I'm going to hold you to three minutes. And when the three minutes are up, I'm going to warn you that you can finish your sentence and then you'll be done. When you are recognized, please state your name and address. If you have, if you're working from a written statement, please provide that statement to our clerk again at arlicaties@cityofsummit.org. And so I will call on Mr. Bennett, who patiently waited his turn. Go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam President. Good evening, Mayor Rades, Members of Council, Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue, Summit. First, I'd like to again thank Aaron Schreger of the DCS for his attention to the vegetation issue concerning utility poles. And I'll make some comments next time. I'd like now to invite Summit to join at no cost with Coalition of Municipalities in dealing with JC P and L. Municipalities already in the coalition are Aberdeen, Atlantic Islands, Chatham, Haslett, Homdel, Keyport, Manalithen, Madawan, Millstone, New Providence, Robbinsville, and Upper Freehold. You may ask, we have a BPU, so why do we need another organization? BPU President Joseph Fierdo Liso recently said he thought JC P and L's performance after Tropical Storm Isaiah was reasonable. If you think the performance was reasonable, consider the week-long outage in Summit after GC P and L was nearly three quarters of the way through its upgrades. According to the Homdel-Haslett Patch from February 26th this year, JC P and L was the worst performing utility in 2019 among the four serving New Jersey by a considerable margin. Here are its numbers. One, average customer hours without power, including major events, 10.56 or over five times the median. Excluding major events, 2.90 or nearly twice the median. Number of outages per customer, including major events, 2.15 or over twice the median. And excluding major events, 1.55 or 1.7 times the median. Many municipal officials do not think they can rely on the BPU to advocate for municipalities. A coalition can better focus on municipalities and provide strength in numbers. The group now is gathering ideas for an action plan. One idea being to increase the fine that the BPU can impose on utilities for non-compliance with orders. Currently, the fine is $100 a day. Another idea is to make utilities periodically earn the right to continue their monopoly franchises. A new franchise should expire after seven years and a municipality should be able to revoke any franchise for cause. There is legislation in the Assembly, A108, and Ms. Licaties now has a copy, to accomplish both objectives. So the contacts from our neighboring towns are Len Resto, Councilman Chatham Burrow, and Mayor Al Morgan of Summit. And for more information about the coalition and to join, please contact Ken G. And I've also given his contact information to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Bennett. Okay, moving on, does anyone else have a comment, a public comment on any topic not on the agenda? A count, Madam Clerk?
Council President, since I don't see anyone raising their hand, I do want to advise that today we received several emails, most of which were regarding the Board of Ed or the school policy on quarantining. If I may go through them. Also, earlier in the month, we received another communication from Mr. Bennett on a different matter regarding the Board of Ed budget. So if I may proceed, I will attempt to read a couple of them just because they're a little bit different and then just summarize the rest.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will read Mr. Bennett's, which is in reference to the Board of Ed budget. The Board of Education and School, Board of School Estimate passed a cap-busting budget with little fanfare, while the public's attention has been focused on gas-powered leaf blowers. As elected officials of Summit, you have one last chance to bring the budget back under the 2% cap. When the budget comes to council for approval, council has the opportunity to return the budget to the Board of Education and the Board of School Estimate to find areas where the boards can bring the budget back under the cap. A one-time healthcare change is indeed a blow, but this charge cannot serve as reason to go into a so-called banked cap. The goal must be to come in at or under the cap every year, and the boards need to find a way to accomplish that objective. I call on council to act as representatives of Summit taxpayers and send the budget back. Okay. The next one is regarding the quarantine policy at the Summit Schools. Amy Messer, no address provided. She writes that Summit Schools are causing fear and children, the quarantine policy is causing fear in children and is concerned with the impact on student mental health, and asks where is the initiative coming from? Eric Yu, no address, supports the public schools' efforts related to COVID-19 restrictions and cited the continuity of curriculum during the pandemic. Rich Lumalo of Fernwood Road, excuse me, says that on a number of occasions, the mayor and council have stated that the school quarantine policy is not within its purview despite improving numbers of people getting vaccinated. Why can't elected officials advocate for their constituents at state level? Rob McSiney, I apologize if I mispronounced that, on Colt Road, writes, "When will council hold town hall meetings regarding the school quarantine policy and support reducing the quarantine length?" He's tired of council inaction. Summit grouping in the central east COVID region makes Summit subject to 10-day quarantine or seven days with negative tests. So Summit is deemed a moderate risk. Council deferring to the Board of Ed is not acceptable. There are two negative impacts. Kids are not, kids not getting tested when contact traced, and kids are suffering mental health issues as a result. Kids are going to town, eating at restaurants, playing non-Summit sports, and still remain absent from school, from Summit School-sponsored co-curriculum activities. Betsy McSiney of Colt Road writes that Summit Schools' policy is council working to, to work with growing number of Summit parents seeking to reduce current length of quarantine, which is only imposed on students and youth extracurricular programs. She's concerned with deteriorating mental and physical health conditions, and council can influence change. Council's voice is currently silent. Paul Gross of Sweetbrier Road writes, "Councilmember Comment at the Summit in Summit Event" said that Summit's children's emotional health is better served by mindful and meditation than outdoor team sport participation. And was referred to, and referred to sports as COVID, as COVID as dangerous, as COVID is as dangerous as a year ago. Does council and mayor agree with this assessment? LaRonde Gum, no address provided, agrees that the quarantine policy needs to be addressed as many students are dealing with multiple quarantines. Students and children are struggling. And she has attended two funerals of teenage boys who took their own lives in the past six months, and another friend saved her son despite his attempt to take his life. Far more concerned with mental and emotional effects of COVID on children than physical effects of the virus. Jeff Gilbert of Parkview Terrace, question, "Does reducing length of quarantine for students considered COVID-close contact who tests negative pose a threat or a risk to the community? Council seems disinterested in advocating for students that have served multiple quarantines." Joe Goransky, no address provided, is a parent of ninth and seventh graders who attend in-person and play both school and town sports. He shares frustration regarding the 14-day close quarantine policy. And he's at a loss as to why the local policy is more strict than CDC's policy and why students and athletes can't test out. Other elements of the policy are strict and do not align with current science and increase, and increase safety of children. Asks the council to reconsider this policy and recommendations of the SUPRR, known as Super, related thereto. I'd like to read Frances Dillon's email, Hal Dillon. He says, "Over the weekend, he listened to both Councilmembers Hairston and Vartan address a group of concerned parents regarding the existing policies impacting our children in the Summit School system related to their academic and co-extracurricular activities. I spoke at the same event and shared my ninth grader's experience going 38 days without in-person instruction related to the current 14-day close-contact quarantine policy. I advocated for the Summit Board of Ed to refile their reopening plans to follow CDC guidelines, which have evolved over time versus the Westfield Health Department guidelines, which have not evolved, and/or mirroring the state guidelines, which also have not evolved. My wife, Jody Campbell, and I have five boys in Summit. We're very concerned about the negative mental impact related to existing guideline protocols. My very specific ask of the Common Council, both Ms. Hairston and Mr. Vartan said, we are looking, quote, "We are looking at the data, and the data says." Both statements allude to data that is informing decisions made by the Common Council. I would like to see that data and analysis of the data to be shared with the citizens of the City of Summit. My second ask, there was a commission created to understand gas-powered leaf blowers. Can you please share details about any commissions created to understand the impact of current Summit/Summit Board of Ed COVID-19 guidelines on the mental health of our children in Summit? His third ask, who is responsible and accountable to answering these questions? My impression is we are trapped in an Abbott and Costello who's on first skit between the mayor, Summit Council, Summit Board of Ed, the Westfield Health Department, and the Summit Health Department. And the last point, I listened to the last Common Council meeting where a very small amount of time was dedicated to the impact of COVID-19 on our students, less than five minutes compared to two-plus hours dedicated to gas-powered leaf blowers. I'm asking you to make this a priority for the Common Council. Our children and their mental health deserve it." Moving on, Meg Beatty, regarding the Summit Schools quarantine policy, the council leadership should advocate for children. Kevin Beatty of Rotary Drive sent three emails, one of which was exactly as written by Mrs. Beatty. His second and third is, "What is the role of the Board of Health regarding COVID restrictions for the entirety of the city, especially those restrictions that impact the children? The governing body should consider communicating with city residents a position or general message and update, and give an update on all COVID restrictions by proper acknowledgement of current climate and feedback from community on known issues. A clear message from the elected officials on what the governing body is doing to impact known challenges with who and by when. If not, would they consider doing so? If so, when?" Sarah Roberts of Bagel Street, "Who in Summit leadership is taking student mental health and well-being into consideration? Currently, the quarantine is the issue. When will Summit adopt the seven-day quarantine with negative test guidelines used by the CDC? How does seven additional days in their rooms benefit children's mental health? After seven days, most kids are in town, even if not allowed back in school. How do guidelines help anyone?" Alexei Levkov of Lowell Avenue questioned the rate of anxiety and depression among students in the Summit Public Schools in the current year relative to previous schools, the previous school year. And the last two we have are Mr. Michael Kessel of Twombly Drive, wants to know if council is working with the regional health department and/or the state to lower the current quarantine period from 14 days to the CDC periods. Rules were put in place during early stages of the pandemic, which can be revisited. And the last is Jenny Gross of Sweetbrier Road, who says teen suicide rates are exploding across the country, per the CDC, due to the risks associated with isolation. And has been told numerous times that council's solution is to increase funding for mental health programs, with no mention of scientific fact that physical activity and socializing with peers produces endorphins, which help maintain positive health, mental health. How does the council justify shutdown of youth and high school extracurricular activities when science proves participation is healthy and extremely low risk? And that is all I have, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we address these, is there anyone else from the public who wants to speak on this topic? Okay, we've got Dr. Pak Tang, go ahead.
Hi, this is Dr. Carol Pak Tang, 234 Summit Avenue. First, I would just like to say that yes, of course, this council, so many people that I know are concerned about the mental health of our students. Secondly, I would say that I am, like, I can tell you that I, I'm on the Board of Directors for the American Academy of Emergency Medicine. I am on the Diversity, Inclusion, and Health Equity section and leadership for the American College of Emergency Physicians. So I sit at the leadership of the two largest national emergency medicine organizations in the United States and arguably in the entire world. And I will say that I am so incredibly proud to be from Summit, New Jersey. I think we have been, our council has led us to be at the forefront of keeping our community safe. Our council has followed with significant, oh, sorry, let me close my phone, with significant vigilance on vigilance on COVID-19, which is hopefully the worst thing, worst public health crisis we will go through in our lifetimes. We are under an incredible amount of stress, all of us, including our children. However, this council has, I think, again, been at the forefront of, of what the best public health measures are. We were one of the schools' districts, I will remind you, one of the very few school districts that had a very sound plan of sending our children back to school in a hybrid format. I think we should remember that that is a privilege. Many students across New Jersey, including in New Jersey City and Bayonne, New Jersey, where I practice emergency medicine, have not gone back to school at all in person. We are coming and speaking from, our community members are coming and speaking from a privileged place. I think we have to remember that we are still currently in a global pandemic, and that unfortunately, I have to report that the variants are very much here in New Jersey, and that we are at the top one of the states in which COVID-19 cases are rising. And unfortunately, the cases are also looking to affect our children more as these variants change. These are the things, not to scare the community, but just to give grounding on what the reality is. We are not over this pandemic. We have to be vigilant, and the council here is doing the best efforts to stay most up-to-date on the best scientific knowledge and considering all of these facts. Again, I get to see the entire landscape of this country, and I will say that Summit has done an incredibly, immensely forefront job on keeping our communities and our children safe. And I think the community needs to remember these things. And I am terrified to hear that so many community members are wanting to loosen the restrictions that have been keeping Summit, New Jersey, safe. Thank you so much. Thank you all to council members for doing the incredible amount of work that they do every day to keep our community safe, and we want to work together as a community to do that. And I can say that these council members we have in front of us on screen are the pillars of keeping those things in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pak Tang. Moving on, we've got William Thar. Go ahead, Dr. Thar.
Yes, I'm William Thar. I'm a retired physician epidemiologist and public health specialist. I've been living in Summit for 34 years. And I just have to second the comments of the previous speaker on how well Summit has really dealt with this pandemic. But I, I do think it's important to really view this as a community issue. This is a public health issue, and we have to deal with it as a unified public. That means not just the schools, but the parents and the community together. In public health, we always say, "The public is the patient." And we, as an entire community, need to deal with this issue, not just the schools alone, not just the businesses, not just the parents, and not just civic organizations. So I think, in listening to this, it's really with the who's the council and the school board that begin to sit down more together to discuss how we can deal with this issue as a community, and work out some of the conflicts that may be occurring between what the school board is doing and what the community may be viewing as appropriate. That, in my experience of working with public health systems over the years, has been the major problem, is getting everyone on the same page to deal with a pandemic that affects everyone in the community. So that's really my comment. Again, I think we've done a great job in Summit. Every community, we have to remember, is different. Every school is different. And so we have to look at those experiences as unique and not generalize from one community's or one school's experience to another.
Thank you, Dr. Thar, for your comment. So we have one more hand up. Jody Campbell, go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you to everybody, and thank you to the common council. We really appreciate you reading the comments. My husband was one of the comments. I'm 269 Ashland Road. We have four children in the district and one in private school. I just wanted to mention them on what, or reiterate what, or speak about what the Dr. Two speakers ago spoke about. Currently, based on the dashboard we received tonight, there are 3,373 students being in the Summit District that are currently in person. As of today, that was as of April 15th. As of April 20th today, there's seven positive cases amongst our students in the entire district. While we, as parents, and fully support and appreciate everything that the Board of Education has done to get our kids back to school, the plan that we put in place in September has worked. Our kids have been in school safely. We have done the best that we possibly can as parents, as citizens, to, to follow all the guidelines, to do everything in our power, to not travel, to do everything to get our kids to school safely. And I think it's an important point to say, we are in Summit. We should not be comparing ourselves to Jersey City, or Bayonne, or any urban city. We need to compare ourselves to Summit. And given the fact that we have not had transmissions in school since September in any of our, or I should say, in any of our outdoor sports, I do understand there were some in the winter sports, none in the fall sports, none in the spring sports, we just want to ask the common council to support our children to continue to evolve with the science, with the data that shows that our children can safely return to school post 10 days with a positive, with a negative test, and get back into the classroom as well as their sports. This is not something about privilege. This is about safely managing and balancing the mental health, the educational needs, as well as the physical and isolation that our children are feeling. We have had multiple quarantines with our two high school children. We have had, watched our elementary school children also deal with the quarantine of their friends. Not a single positive case has come from those quarantines. So yes, we do know they work. But we also know they don't need to be as long as they are, because the shortened quarantine in our neighboring towns has also returned those children to school safely. We just want to ask for that. We certainly are balancing the needs of everything, and that we are dealing with a pandemic. But as we all get vaccinated, as our children can get back to school, as our teachers, thankfully, because of the Board of Education, are all vaccinated, we just want to evolve with that data. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none, we're going to try to address some of these issues. And so, one of the themes seems to be, I'm just going to try to hit the themes on this, but one of them seems to be a request that we, that we advocate for a lesser standard, or that we adopt the CDC standard. And I think there's, I want to just, in the, you know, in the day, you know, at the risk of going into the weeds a little bit, I want to just make sure that we're all on the same page when we talk about what the CDC standards are and what the standards are, that, you know, and what the school and the local board of health, or local health department are, are implementing. So the CDC says that the best option is still 14 days, and that is the safest and most conservative choice. They, they further say that, that local public health authorities can, may determine and establish quarantine options for their jurisdictions based on local conditions and needs. And that's, so it's the local health officers that make the final decisions about how long quarantine lasts based on local conditions and needs. So that's where the School Matrix comes in, which was a document that was created by the State Department of Health. And it was adopted by our district, our school, and they, at, as part of the reopening plan, agreed to follow this guidance and to also follow the local health department's guidance. So the, I think you've probably all seen the matrix. It's the thing with the green, yellow, orange, and red columns. And what, in effect, that is doing is guiding our local health departments on how to implement the CDC guidance about when it's appropriate to shorten the quarantine. And what it's telling us is that the, when you're in a high transmission area, which is the orange zone, which is what we are in right now, you, the state guidance, which our, our Westfield Regional Board of Health officer follows, is that 14, is 14 days for quarantine. If we were in the yellow zone or green zone, then we would be able to go with the recommendation, the recommendation of the health officer would be, would allow for the seven or 10-day quarantine that, that many of the parents are asking us to adopt. So in effect, what, what these parents are, what parents are asking us to do is somehow insert ourselves into this decision-making process that's already been made, where the Board of Ed has adopted a policy of how they're going to proceed using the state and local, and local health guidance. We are not in a position, we are not the health experts, we are not in a position to advocate that we do something different from what the CDC is recommending and from what, and what the local health recommendations are. So I know that it seems odd that, you know, that Summit is in a, is in the Central East District, which includes all the way down to Monmouth and Ocean County, but when I actually looked and, and, you know, was thinking about, would it be worth arguing that we shouldn't be included with Monmouth and Ocean County? But that actually is worse, because right now, Union County has higher numbers than most of the other counties. So as, while Summit looks pretty good comparatively, you can, we can't look at Summit as a bubble, as only Summit, or only Summit and a couple of surrounding towns, because people don't stay in Summit. They travel around. They play sports against other communities. They, you know, our teachers live in other communities, people come into town to work, and we share a regional hospital. So there are a lot of reasons why we can't just look at the numbers in Summit, which are getting better in the, in the last week. But, you know, New Jersey, up until a few weeks ago, was number one in the nation in cases. We're now number three. So we're still, we're still not out of the woods. So I, I think responsibly, we, as council members, cannot interfere and inject our own opinions of how to handle public health. We need to defer to our public health officials, who are the experts in this topic. You know, and we do, we do care deeply about the mental health of our students. We, we also care about the health of all 22,000 residents of this community. So we have to balance the needs of a lot of different groups, and that's something we're doing all the time. So that, so that's, I think that covers most of the themes. As far as mental health and the number of students affected, those are really questions for the Board of Education and not for us. And also, several, there were two comments, who commented, who mentioned that after seven days, kids are going to, going into town and seeing their friends and doing other things. And I just, you know, and therefore, the quarantine isn't effective. But I liken this somewhat to speed, to a speed limit, you know. The speed limit is, you know, tells you what speed you should travel, and yes, people do exceed the speed limit. But I don't know that anyone would advocate that because people go over the speed limit, we should get rid of speed limits. This is, this guidance is intended to help us get out of what is a terrible situation where a lot of people are suffering. You know, there are students I know are having issues with mental health. I know that our, you know, that a lot of people in this community are having issues with mental health. So, you know, I would ask everyone to please try to follow the COVID guidance and follow what the recommendations are from our Westfield Regional Health Officer, so we can get out of this sooner. And with that, I'll turn it over. I think Council Member Little had some things she wanted to respond to as well.
Thank you. I want to start by saying, once again, that we, we aren't on a bubble here in council either. Just as I said, I can certainly sympathize and, and feel the same fears and and concerns that a lot of the neighbors have expressed about the Encino-Fernwig. I live in this neighborhood. I also have two children in high school, and I have two children in college. So I am not, I'm, I'm certainly well aware of the mental health impacts of the last year has had on our kids and our young people. I think there, there are many people on council that have kids in the high school, in the, in the college. So some of these comments that clearly council doesn't care about the mental health or isn't aware of the mental health impacts on our kids, we, we are, we're in the same boat with you. We're all, we're all trying to navigate this past year and trying to get our kids through it. My kids have been, because of health impacts in my family, I have a junior and senior who have not set foot in the high schools all year, and, you know, haven't been in high school since last March. So, you know, I, I understand, I, I clearly understand and sympathize, and we're all trying to work this out. Where we disagree is how to address those mental health impacts and how to best get out of this. My opinion, as a person and as a council member, is the best way to get out of this pandemic and get everyone through it is to follow the public health guidelines and to, to get, and follow the experts in trying to get through this pandemic and protect our community and our children, and make sure that we all get through this safely. Our, our mental, our public health officer, Megan Avalone, she spoke at council a number of times. So I hope that people have been able to see her speak and see how concerned and passionate she is about protecting our community. She is certainly not the, the strictest public health officer in the entire state. There are many school districts who have not gone back in person at all, or who recently went back, you know, just, just after the spring break period, and that's the first time they've been back in school. I work at a high school in Newark, where the kids just went back this week for the first time all year. So our public health officer has been very careful to balance those needs of the community for the kids to have learning, but to do it safely. So I trust her, because, again, just as I trust our police department, they've, they've earned our trust, so has Megan Avalone. She really has earned our trust in guiding us through this pandemic and making sure that our community is safe. Also, I want to address some of the comments that were in the emails tonight, and as well as a letter to the editor that appeared last week, saying that council clearly cares about leaf blowers more than our children. And I really take issue with that. Some of the comments were that we only spent five minutes on the, on the effect on children at the last council meeting. We spent four hours on leaf blowers. That is not a council decision. That was a resident's decision. Because last week at our council, or two weeks ago at our council meeting, we had one email that came in about the quarantine, which we read, and then we had almost 100 people that showed up and wanted to speak about leaf blowers. We didn't turn those people away and say that we weren't going to listen to them, because we had a more important issue. We listened to the residents and we responded to that, and we heard everyone who wanted to come to this council meeting and talk about leaf blowers, and we, we took all those concerns and we listened, and we responded. We read all the emails tonight. We're responding to you now. To say that we don't care about the mental health of children, our community, is unfair and untrue. And I take, and you know, I want to take exception to that. That is, that is clear and true. The fact that we, we, we don't necessarily agree with the best way to get out of it is just, it's, it's just an agreement, a disagreement about how, how to best navigate these waters. And I think, you know, there are a lot of opinions on each side. My, my guiding principle is to follow the public health experts who have studied this and who do this, you know, this is their job, and that they've earned our trust in doing this. And I'll just say one last comment in closing. My brother is a high school principal in Ontario, Canada, where the variants have exploded over the last few weeks. And those variants are present in New Jersey. I've been watching them carefully. They're incredibly contagious. They affect young people more than the, than the previous variants. All the schools in Ontario province are closed. They're in a full lockdown. There's not a single child in the entire province of Ontario that's going to school right now. And those are the variants that are in our community that we are trying to, that we are trying to keep from spreading. And we're trying to keep ahead of that with vaccinations and with public health measures that keep our community safe. So we are not out of this pandemic. I, I know that firsthand from speaking with my brother this week. We need to be careful. We need to do this safely. And we, we, we have, we've, we've said over and over again, we do not have control over the Board of Ed. It's their decision. But certainly, if it were my decision, I would follow the public health guidance. Thank you.
Council Member Nigel.
Thank you very much, Council President. I, I want to echo some of the points that Councilwoman Little and yourself made as well, but I want to just expand on a couple of things, and also give context here for some of this stuff that I think is missing from, from a lot of this discussion. To the issue of whether or not we care. To the issue of whether or not we care. So I want to take us back to back to last August. I understand times have changed, but last August set the tone for how we were going to conduct the school year. If folks will remember at that time, there was a lot of consternation and concern in this community about going back full time to school or going in person to school. There are many members of this community, parents, who I know, you know, as parents that were, did not want to do that, they thought it was unsafe. And yet, I, as a member of the Board of School Estimate, was vocal in the fact that I thought it made sense for us to go back. In fact, I got attacked for it because part of the argument I made at that point in time was the mental health. I have, as I said before, I'm a father of two, one is a middle schooler, one's a high schooler. I understood then about the importance of the mental health for my kids, for your kids to be in school. And so in that role that I could have on the Board of School Estimate, I supported it. And, and somebody could look it up, look at the Teachers' Union letter that came out, called me out specifically, saying that it was, that it was, that it was wrong for me to basically say that they, that we should go back that way. So for people to now say, well, you know, you don't care about mental health. I joined Councilwoman Little and being slightly, if not more so, offended, I will use that word, offended, at being castigated in that manner. Second, back in February, a parent who's, who represented that they were involved in this super group, reached out to me, talked with me about what their issue was at that point in time. Primarily, he went through the issues that had occurred in the past, but his focus was on the issue of having spring sports. And so, as, as Councilwoman Little said, actually, we got one email, we had Mr. Gross speak to us at one time in March. And then two days later was the Board of School Estimate. Go and look at the videotape on that Board of School Estimate meeting. And that Board of School Estimate meeting, I raised specifically, I said, even though I understand the parameters of what the Board of School Estimate and my role as a council member on that, I specifically raised the issue of spring sports. So to say that we didn't care about the issue that Super raised, the one issue that was raised at that time was dealing with spring sports and how it was going to be done or not done. That was the concern, it was raised by me. And in fact, I believe Councilwoman Harrison, who also serves with me on the Board of School Estimate as a member of council, raised the issue of mental health specifically at that meeting. Because she's been passionately caring about the issue of mental health repeatedly at council meetings. There was no member from the parents group there, by the way, just so the record is also clear about that. There was an opportunity for public comment there. There was no public comment at that meeting. Third, after that meeting, I actually reached out to the parent who had contacted me from Super. And I asked them, why aren't you at the Board of School estimate meeting? They said, we're going to go to the Board of Education meeting. Fine, okay, they did. Whatever that discussion was, that was then. Next thing was again, another Board of School estimate meeting. I was there, Councilwoman Harrison was there, the mayor was there, the school superintendent was there, the entire school board was there. The fact that super parents are asking us, why don't you have a meeting with all of us? We were all there. Parents from this group were not there, not a single person was there. The next thing we know, Mr. Gross sends an email to council, which as Councilwoman Little said, was read aloud, responded to, including by the Council President and Councilwoman Allen at the last meeting, look at the minutes, it was answered at that point in time. There's very little dialogue one can have with an email. Even tonight, parents who sent us email, I understand that's the rules, you can send us emails. We cannot have a dialogue with an email. We can try to respond to it, you may not like the response, you have no way, we have no way of understanding and getting anywhere deeper, no follow up, no nothing with the issue if you just send us an email. And the next thing we know, we have a letter to the editor and we have demonstrations. If people want to have a discussion, I keep on saying this, I'm getting tired of saying this, social media is not the way to have discussions with people. We all have these devices, they have two functions. They have a function where you can just put things on social media or you could actually pick up the phone and reach out to people and say, okay, let's talk about this. How can we try to figure out a solution? We're all in this boat together. The question is whether you want to try to row in the same direction and move forward or whether you want to point fingers and attack people and try to use the oars to hit each other over it. It's not going to move us forward as a community if we continue to go down this path. I wanted to set the record straight, not because I want to accuse people of things. What I want to point out is don't go there and say, listen, you don't care. We may disagree with the conclusions we reach, but it's not because we don't care about the issues. We think deeply, we think of all the options, we have to think about 22,000 people that we have responsibility for. There's eight of us here, the mayor, seven of us on council, that's it. We represent 22,000 people. We have to think about the people who are immunocompromised, we have to think of the people who have suffered through COVID. We have to think of other people who are concerned about that 14 days, is it sufficient, is it not sufficient? There's a lot of people's issues that we're balancing. You may hear from your group of folks that may have the similar issue. We hear from a whole bunch of other people as well. And we try to balance it as best we can. But the only way to have a dialogue is for people to actually reach out, not to say, hey, we're setting up a meeting, show up on a weekend, if, you know, just not communicate, that's not a way of setting up a meeting. Does anybody do that in business world, set up a meeting that way? No, I don't think so. You know, we all know how to set up a meeting. If you want to have a real meeting, you call up and you say, hey, listen, these are the times that work for us, what are the times that work for you? Let's see where we can go with that. I suggest to people strongly, if you take this issue seriously, you will go through the proper procedure to try to figure out how to have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nigel. Does anyone else have anything to say? Okay, so I'm going to declare the, the comment period closed and we're going to move on now to the budget presentation.
All right, simmer down, your applause. Okay, so Rosie, I just need to share my screen. You can make me a co-host.
Okay, Michael, you're a co-host.
Okay, if it. Can you see that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Trying to get to, let's see. Apologize for this, I have my screen.
I know the feeling.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, I'm not sure why.
If you want to send it to me, I'll try and open it for you.
I can try that. It's coming your way, Rosie.
Okay, thank you. Must be a very big file, it's not coming through yet, I'm sure it'll come any minute.
All right, I'm gonna. Sure. See if this works. Rosie?
Yes, let's, yes, we see it.
Okay, fantastic. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay. All right, so I'm going to try to just remind everyone, this is just an overview of the, the, what we'll put up on the website, if it's not already up, already, is a pretty comprehensive budget report and document that we do or we've done since I've, I started six years ago. And it has an abundance of information that I think anyone interested in our, our budgetary financial condition, please, please take the time to look at it, and I'm just going to try to run through this. But I do, I just want to take this mo- a moment to express my sincere gratitude to all city employees and, and what they've had to endure over the last year and, and, and how going, thinking back, back to last March when I was presenting the 2020 municipal budget, I think we were about a week into closure and the pandemic. And, and what, what municipal employees had to, had to do and, and balancing their safety, their family's safety, as well as still continuing to provide essential services to the community. And I just want to take this opportunity to, to, to just thank them for everything that they've done, the great teamwork and cooperation that they've, that they demonstrated and with great professionalism. So thank you, and I want to thank the mayor and common council for all your efforts over the last year and certainly during this challenging budgetary period of 2020 to 2021 and all the work that you've done in your respective committees with department heads and their operating capital budgets. I thank you for your hard work as volunteers in this community, I want to thank you. And I want to thank all the department heads and division managers that, and their efforts and, and coming up, coming up with the budget this year with all the challenges we've, we're facing, which I will get into. And I want to thank my enormous staff of three, really two others that in, in the Department of Administration, Megan Champney and Amy Cairns for what, what they contribute in, in this effort through, through the budget season. And I want to give a special thanks and recognition to the city CFO, Tammy Baldwin, for all of your countless hours and weekends and late evenings working with me on this. So thank you, Tammy. And we will now get into, just to give the public, for the benefit of the public, just sort of how this starts. And it seems like we've been nonstop since last year, working on a budget, which we completed in June for the 2020 year. And then we were back at it in August with, for the 2021 budget. And this just gives you a quick process of what we've been doing. And we had a capital budget workshop back in December of 2020. Some of you perhaps in the public saw that and we, that, that, that was just solely on capital budget requests. And then we moved on and what the department heads do, meeting in, with their respective committees in, in previous year and then going into January and February where department heads present their budgets to the finance committee. And the capital budgets committee works on fine tuning the capital budget requests. And so the two committees serve an important function during this process. And, and I thank you for your hard work getting through this. And we are now at the introduction, presentation and introduction stage. And just for, for, for knowledge, for the public, the budget has to be, after introduction, out for 28 days before we can have a public hearing, which 28 days happens to fall on May 18th. So we will be having, conducting our public hearing at that point. And if it is necessary, which at this point I don't believe so, but if it's necessary to amend it, we will. And it's, we will be, our budget will be under state review this year. And we will certainly communicate any, any, any changes that need to be, take place in this process. But at this point, May 18th will be the public hearing on this budget that's introduced this evening. So normally I go into, the city has typically nine goals that we've, we've created over the years and, and we'll have nine goal, we do have nine goals again this year. And I'm just going to go through three and, and some of the key actions. If you're more interested in, in the extensive nature of the goals and initiatives and key actions, I encourage you to go and look at our budget report. But first and foremost, it's the safety of our, our, our city facilities and our employees and, and certainly functioning and providing our essential services to the community. And right now, we are projecting to potentially, tentatively, we open the, our public facilities June 1st. And that we've done everything since last year to ensure that our employees are operating in a safe environment. We were open for several months last year and then closed back down to the public in November. So now we're just kind of waiting on some guidance from the state. And certainly the, the data will sort of dictate where, what we do with opening up back to the public. And certainly, working with our health officer, who I, I can't stress how valiantly she has worked through the past year. She is, Megan Avalon, that is enormous stress that she's worked under in this environment. And I, I, if there was going to be an MVP of the last year of our city employees, it would be given to Megan. But she, what she's looking to do is to set up pop up vaccination sites throughout, throughout the city over the coming months. So we'll work with her. And then I want to just sort of highlight the efforts of the city clerk's office during the past year and, and what they've had to do with providing licensing, processing licensing applications for all of the sidewalk cafes and everything that the, the common council worked with the central business district and other parts of our business community and making sure that they were given every opportunity possible to function over the last year. And, and the city clerk's office played a pivotal role, as well as our, our, our construction building department, who stayed open and, and functioned out of our hallway for months when we first closed last year and, and stayed open for a few hours to at least provide the public an opportunity to, to process applications and continue to do so, is the only part of our building that is open to the public for just dropping off and picking up permits. So I, I commend them on their efforts and I thank them. Goal two, this involves the Broad Street West redevelopment, which is a, which is a focus of ours, has been for years. And, and this is an important years in our, one of our, our initiatives. And, and certainly, we're, we're focused on, it started with hiring a financial advisor last month to help the city model out some of the programs that we were discussing with the redevelopers. And we intend to, and then sort of come, speaking to a public meeting, we, right now, tentatively, are looking at May to present us all of what we've been working on the past year with the redevelopers. So we're, we're excited about that. I think the, the community will be pleased with what, what we've worked on and I think what they, they will be presenting. And then the, our contractual negotiation around a redevelopment agreement. And that continues to sort of be developed during this process. And we, we hope to finalize this process this year. And then the last goal I'll, I'll show is just around sort of the financial part in our budget. And I, I can tell you that going into this year, given where we wound up last year with some of the, the budgetary challenges we had in some areas, particularly parking, and, and then just the revenue loss that we, we, we experienced and, and what we knew going into this year would be challenges. So it was a concern of mine to, to get to this, this goal of 2%. And I, I think we, you'll see that we, we And I think you'll see that we've achieved that and have right now we'll be presenting something that is around 1%. So. And then just our AAA rating with all credit rating agencies. And we'll be looking at all of our issuances that we have out there with long-term bonds and seeing where there's opportunities to certainly lower our financing costs and, and think about a strategy long-term. Given where our debt services are right now. And I think that will be an ongoing discussion we'll have. And certainly just recently, the last, last month with the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And what it is providing to all local government, states and county governments that are in dire need of financial aid. And, and we certainly are appreciative of those efforts and what we are anticipating. And I'll get more into that. So this is again, an overview, and I will try to expeditiously get through this, given where we are in the night. The new, the next two slides are, we'll, we'll just highlight what, what we've experienced. And just going back to last year. We had over a million dollars worth of costs that tied to the pandemic. And what qualified under the CARES Act and, and what we submitted to the county who is overseeing, each county government is overseeing the distribution of, for reimbursement purposes. And to date, we've received over 848,000 of the million that we, that we submitted for reimbursement. And there's still, they put it, they paused at the end of last year, unfortunately, on the remaining funds that we submitted and the second application. And we have no real guidance on what, what's going to happen, whether we will be reimbursed of those other funds. But even with all the amendments we made mid-year on the, on the 2020 budget. We reduced our, our revenues, given what we were seeing at the time when we, after the introduction of the 2020 budget. We reduced it nearly by nearly 400,000 at that point. And we still realized a shortfall of, of over $246,000. So it, 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 it not only impacted us last year, it, it impacts this year's budget because for just the sake of the public. And the point of education, we typically cannot anticipate revenues beyond what we've realized in the prior year. And so that posed a big challenge for us this year. And now getting into parking utility fund. If you've evaluated past years, past budget years and what the general budget, and that's really dealing with municipal operations that is funded by municipal tax revenues, the parking utility is a user fund base. So it, if, I don't, I think anyone who is driven through our community and passed any of our lots and could understand how the majority, overwhelming majority of people were working remotely last year and into this year. Our lots and parking infrastructure has, has been quite vacant. And so that's impacted not only the utility budget, which I will get into, but also impacts our, our own. But last year we, we had a $1.1 million operating deficit. Fortunately, the state provided us an opportunity to finance that deficit for, starting in 2022. We need to pay back, essentially pay back ourselves for funding it with surplus that we've had in the parking utility to cover the operating loss due to just the significant revenue deterioration that we faced last year. And so we will be paying back this $850,000 note that the council approved, as well as the director of the Division of Local Government Services. And that will start in 2022. And that will be $170,000 that we have to put in future year budgets and pay back over five years. So the next slide gets into what the impacts on this year's budget. And this to steal, just to highlight up top, just thinking about what, what we were looking at going into this year. And the extreme challenges we faced from a revenue perspective. And just those four points highlight what we were contending with, with loss of revenue. And mainly attributed to the parking utility and what we had to remove as a revenue source from the general fund budget. Because of the significant deteriorated revenue loss, deterioration in the revenue for, for the parking utility. They could not absorb that kind of appropriation in their budget. So we had to remove it as a revenue to help them balance out their budget. And so that goes there. But fortunately, what we're anticipating with the, the ARP fiscal recovery aid. It looks like at this point, it's our understanding that we should expect about $2.15 million. And that will be divided in 50% tranches. So that's the 1.07 million you see there, which we are anticipating in this year's budget. And then additional surplus that we needed to balance our own budget and increase over last year of 700,000. And the parking utility. We are first, going back to 2020, when we were introduced to budget, we were near $4 million that we were anticipating in that utility. And then we modified that and amended the budget down to $3.4 million. And it's just simply what we were expecting in revenue to offset the cost that we, we, we needed to fund last year. And we still were down that $1.1 million. So this year, we're, we are only projecting $2.2 million in revenue. And so this is, you know, 1.8 million dollar loss from just a year ago that we were projecting. And unfortunately, what we had to do to balance this budget in, in the 2.2 is to use over 900,000. So that, of that 2.2, 900,000 is, is a revenue source that we're using to balance the budget. So. The utility, which, which was in exceptional, exceptionally good shape, the big start of 2020 is, is, is facing certainly something unprecedented that it's never faced since the parking utility has been created. And as such, we will be reducing our, our fund balance to zero, which we do anticipate several hundred thousand to lapse from last year's budget. And on the appropriation side, so that will help replenish some of the fund balance. And hopefully we've conservatively estimated the revenue this year that we will exceed. And right now we're on pace to, we're exceeding some of our, our projections at this point in the first quarter. So we're hopeful that we will, that it will get better and we will exceed our projections. And, and this is just showing on the appropriation side, what the reduction in salary wages and other expenses. This is just a quick snapshot of the overall budget, and this includes all the funds. So this is the, the general fund and we, it's, it's down by 0.28%. Our capital budget, last year, our capital budget was the lowest it was in 10 years. This year is, is, is a couple hundred thousand, almost $200,000 lower. Our sewer utility fund, the, the big jump in the capital budget is the, our, our three-year contribution. Every three years, the joint meeting Essex Union Counties, they have a three-year project amount that all the participating communities contribute to their overall capital budget plan. And every three years, we have this sort of amount this year, about 972,000, a little over that. And that's the jump there. And parking utility, as you can see, is, is, is down 35%. And that was from the amended budget. So this is just a summary of all those financial totals, which are down 0.41%. This is just some of the budget summary points. Right? I think probably the most important to many in the public is the municipal tax rate, which we're right now anticipating and asking for an increase of 1.05%. In the tax rate, it's a little bit under one cent. And then it just, just shows some of the increases. The, the enterprise revenue would have been down, but for the anticipated fiscal recovery funds from the, the ARP Act. The municipal levy, it is showing an increase of $548,127. But when you run this through, and I will explain, I think the next slide, why it's not that much. And then just the salary and wage and other expense increases. So fortunately, we have had some really good growth in, in our tax base. And last, last year was $27.8 million. The year before that was close to 30 million. I would say by, within the last, back to, back to 2018. It's approximately 93 million that we've seen an increase in our tax base. Unfortunately, from about 2013 to 2018, we did have a property on the west side, which was the former Selgin. Now first to Marisque. There was, there was a lot of loss in that, that after Selgin had purchased the property from Merck. But this, this, this community and our tax base is strong and we've, it's, it's clearly evidenced through our, our growth. And what that ultimately does is whatever we're with the, with the tax levy and what it's seeing as an increase, this actually reduces when you're running through all the levies. This is what you're, you're looking at at the 1.21 million. So that's for the total, total new tax revenues that this $27.8 million increase in our tax base is producing. And part of that for our municipal tax revenue, it's a gain of 237,761. So the, the impact of this growth is 0.89%. And so if you think about the 1.05% that we are anticipating growth, this would all be close to 2% if we didn't, if, if the tax base had stayed the same as 2020. And here are the municipal tax rates. Right now we are estimating overall a decrease. And you can see the areas where you see a decrease. I know that the school district budget, they are talking about over, I think it's 2.44%. What you have to look at from what, what we're funding is, is a calendar year, they're talking about overlapping years. So. Part of the last year's budgets in this year that we're funding through our levy and then next year's budget, half of that is funded. So, and more importantly, and I'll show you, is that there, the school debt that we, that we handle, that is under our control through, through any bond issuance, because it's a type one school district, has dropped by $1.2 million this year. So that, that through the, the increase in the tax base, you will see a decrease in your school tax rate this year. And so this just gives you an estimated, we don't know after all the budgets are adopted and the county tax board certifies this, and you will see it in your third quarter, I guess, tax bill of where, where we wind up. But this is what we're projecting right. And then just, just really to highlight that of, say, $1 that you're paying of your taxes, about close to 20 cents of that is for municipal services. And you can see this, sort of the percentages are, represent the, think about it as $1, the percent of that $1 what you're paying for your, for each respective entity. So this is just giving you a comparison. So the average residential assessment this year, 2021 is $423,028. And so when you look at this, this is sort of what this reflects as an example. And what it means, if you think about it in terms of your own home and 100,000 for the municipal tax rate increase this year, it amounts to about $9 per 100. For this, this would amount to, for the, the average assessed home, about $63. And that's about, you know, a little, little over $15 per quarter. And then the school district, you're looking at about $24 as a decrease per 100,000. So, and the county is about a dollar. So this is just again, an example of the average assessed home. And this is assessed, market value is, is approximately 997,000, a little over that. Given the ratio is 42.42% this year. And then this just reflects the tax rates increases over the last five years. And what I can say is even going back to 2012, the municipal tax rate on average has been about 0.45%. So you can see how this has kind of been up and down, but under, you know, hovering between the zero. It's, it's pretty indicative of what's been happening over the last decade, averaging about a, close to a half a percent. This one, this, this shows what, when you're, when you're thinking about all the communities in Union County and you hear about who has the highest taxes, what you have to factor in is the equalization ratio to bring everyone par theoretically of what 100%, if every community was assessed at 100%. We're at 42.42%. Simply that is, that, that's a good thing. Your, the, the market value is far greater, as I just showed you with the average assessed home vis a vis the market value. When you use the ratio to equalize that and, and, and sort of multiply that by the, all of the 2020 rates. This is what this reflects. And this has been consistent, some it has, you know, from as far as the effective tax rate is, is the lowest in the county. So I like to highlight this, and this has been something that the community has been able to highlight for many years. And still the lowest in the county. So getting into the, on the revenue side, just from the, and the general fund. This just gives you basic juxtaposition of 2021 and 2020 and what the, the dollar change. The percentages in the left column just reflect the percentage of, in dollars, what that reflects of the total revenue of the $51,787.74, $74, 747,000. Way too many numbers I'm dealing with these days. So just to highlight a couple, as I mentioned, the school district. Their debt service. Just a number I want to reflect because it is a part of our budget. Local revenue is down over 346,000, the additional surplus that we're using. Enterprise contributions. And I'll get into a little bit more detail with that. And then the levy. So breaking down the local revenues and enterprise contributions. As you can see, we're, so the Family Aquatic Center last year. Prior to 2020, we were averaging anywhere between 480 to 500,000. We needed to reduce that, just given what was going on last year. And we did still open, it was three weeks later than we normally open, but we weren't anticipating. We, we had reduced it from what we were going in, I think at 490 down to 250 last year in our budget. We wound up realizing about $283,000. This year, why we're able to anticipate more and we're, we have, are, we are anticipating $415,000 in this year's budget. That reflects 165,000 above last year. And the reason why we're allowed to do that is the state is permitting municipalities to use a three-year average of revenue sources to, to help communities. It was, it was a, a good move on their part to allow us to do this. Makes sense. We anticipate opening up normal time this year around Memorial Day weekend. And we are using a three-year average. So that's, and that is the only revenue line item we're doing that. And then some of the others that you can see that are above last year. The decreases municipal court, interest on investments. We are, we are significantly down. We did not reach and come anywhere near what we had anticipated. And, and that was after amending those numbers. And we do not expect that to come back this year. And that's why we're not using a three-year average on those two. So this is, you know, you can see this, how significant of a revenue loss this is just with those, those three. And those are sort of beyond our control. It's federal reserve rate, federal fund rate. And municipal court is just, we're just not seeing the levels just based on the first quarter. We're not, we're not seeing these levels get anywhere near where, than what we typically see. And then through the contributions, the And then through the contributions, the American Rescue Plan, certainly a significant revenue source for us. And then some additional funds we're using from our general capital surplus. We had actually canceled well over eight hundred thousand last year from prior year authorizations and funding and for projects we either finished or not doing. So that's helping us this year just to pay off debt that we have, and 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 that's the way to look at it. And then our utility is very healthy. And we're taking a little bit, there's more of a contribution coming from that fund. And then you can see in the decreases parking utility and 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 over seven hundred and fifty thousand there. And then just for municipal sale of assets, we just don't have the, we're using about six hundred and fifty thousand this year. And that's that's about two hundred thousand lower than last year. Just just shows you the property tax levies and percentage changes. And everybody's generally thinking about the property tax levy and the two percent, and we are well under once again by a million twenty one thousand four hundred and sixty four. Onto the appropriation side, and this just sort of breaks it out to municipal operations, other appropriation reserve on collected taxes. And that's what it entails in the budget. Just breaks it down a little bit more in terms of this year and last year. Percent again, just the that's the percent of the overall number. And then the dollar changes. Pension. And and you'll see on the next slide, our debt service are big cost drivers this year on the appropriation side. And then just again, the school debt service is actually one point, nearly one point four million down. So that that's, that's great for them. I wish we were in that position. And appropriations cap, we talk about this a lot, given what we do prior to the introduction of the budget. And we are well under our what we'd be would be permissible under state law. Personnel, we, there's a lot that you can always go back to this, this will be posted on the website if it's not already. And we were down at least from an FTE, FTE up, part time down four, overall down one. There was a lot of changes last year, a little bit this year. In the tax success, we eliminated a full time position, we converted the part time to full time. Our chief communications officers, even though she's probably working beyond full time for many years, was only part time. We eliminated a part time commission, a part time position, and then just some impacts, the clerk's office, tax collector office, and then some in DCP and DCS. Salary wages, this is just a snapshot of all the funds and what the overall salary and wage cost. And the general fund, it's just a little under two percent that we're seeing an increase. Overall, we are just under one and a half percent. So municipal operations, there's salary and wages, and then there's another, when you look at the budget and all the respective department budgets, you'll see salary and wage and other expenses. And just just giving you some summary points on the other expenses section of the general fund. We are, once again, in our curbside collection, we had renewed a contract last year that was saw a significant increase mid-year. So we had half a year last year, and now you're seeing the other half of the increase this year. Hopefully, hopefully, that we know that will be stabilized this year, so we shouldn't expect an increase next year. Seeing decrease in our disposable charges. And then some increases in in the professional lines, which in the in the planning services, special projects, much of what we are budgeting, we will be reimbursed for, and this is primarily related to our the Broad Street West redevelopment project. We need to budget for our professional legal planning costs. But we will be reimbursed through escrow, through redevelopers escrow, but we just need to fund it to pay bills and then get reimbursed. And we expect greater activity in that in that area this year. And then and just in healthcare, we're down actually, just what we're budgeting as far as the net amount from two point four last year down to three, two point three. Employee contributions are up by twenty thousand. And then the last line there, you see, we have about twenty employees who opt out. And what what we assess as far as the savings to our costs, and that's 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 significant. And that's up about sixty thousand, I think, from last year. And then pension obligations, that that is up a pretty good amount of three hundred and seventy thousand. And what it's been averaging over the the last ten years. And that and then this is, as you can see, about six percentage points up above that. Not a particularly good year for our pension obligations. And then the reserve for collected taxes, we have an excellent collection rate, ninety nine point seven. And we tend to be in that ninety nine point six to ninety nine point seven. Our collection rate, we do anticipate something that is much lower, but that helps. You know, the reserve for uncollected taxes numbers, what what funds that, and you never know in any given year. Fortunately, we had a, we did not, we were a little concerned about just what was going on with the pandemic and how that was going to have an impact on our on our tax base. But anybody following the real estate market knows that 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 was not, that that definitely did not play out. And in fact, it was stronger than what we expected. And collection or collection rate was was very, very good last year. So and then our debt service is up significantly over close to four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But we will be paying, which is as far as principle and the way I look at what we're paying off in debt and what we're taking on in potentially new debt with our capital budget, and is getting closer to almost that amount, which I showed earlier was about three point nine. So we're we're not to say that we'll be funding the complete amount, but that's at least what we are asking for in our our capital budget. And there are years when we are, when our capital budgets are approved, but we didn't just decide that we either don't need as much or after bid, it comes in lower. Those are good outcomes. And then next year, our, you know, unfortunately, we're looking at another pretty significant increase in our our debt service. But going back to what we're looking at in existing bond issuances, if there's any call options for us to potentially do a refunding, we will certainly be looking at that. And any shorter short term notes that we have out back from two thousand nineteen, we will be looking at potentially going into a longer term issuance that will help us with with just immediate, short to to medium term debt service payments over the next several years. So we will work hard on that. The finance committee is is always engaged on on that topic. And Tammy and I will certainly be discussing that more as we get past the budget. And then this is just gives you a snapshot of our debt position and our equalized valuation of seven point four billion dollars. And what the statutory power, really what that means is it by by law, you're allowed to take out up to three point five percent of your your equalized valuation is, and that's what that amount is. Our net debt is actually is fifty four point six million dollars. It's about similar to last year's a little lower. We dropped by, I think, a hundredth of a of a point. And then this year, it's at point seven three percent. And just to try to finish this up with capital budgets, I'm I'm just, this is again, our general fund capital budget is the lowest it's been. Really, just looking back the last ten, twelve years. And the sewer utility, a large part of that, sixty five percent of that number is our contribution to the joint meeting. Parking services, we are not doing any capital projects. It's just a good summary of all the departments. We're lower in the DCS ask. DCP. Overall, down by four point five or four point six percent. And this is just our utilities. And just quickly go through fire department. This is all replacement vehicles that are over ten years, there's high maintenance costs. And then just with equipment, replacement fire hose needs to be replaced every ten years. So there's just a program that we do every year for replacing turnout gear, fire hose. Our incident command vehicles is over, is approximately near ten years old. And then our police department, same thing, the vehicle replacement program they've been doing, lease to own options. And just trying to replenish the older vehicles. And just to to avoid high maintenance costs that is over, you know, we have an extensive sort of replenishment, recapitalization of of our vehicle fleet. And we do a good job with that to avoid reaching those years in vehicles when it does cost. We do try to stretch it out as much as possible, but we we do have a pretty effective program in the police department to replacing older vehicles. And some of this equipment, the NetCirc servers are way past their useful life, as well as this variable message boards that's been out there for, I think, it's almost twenty years old. And then the joint dispatch, this is our contribution to their one time capital purchase of workstations and computer equipment. And then community services, which is the largest part of our capital budget ask. And it's at two point seven this year, it's point seven nine. Infrastructure being the largest percentage of that. And this is some of the road improvements that you'll see in the streets. And there's more detail in our in the the budget report document that you can find on the website. And it gives more specifics on some of these other projects and the amounts attributed to the micro paving and pedestrian safety improvements. And vehicle equipment, pretty self explanatory, again, all way past their useful life. And then just maintaining our city buildings and what we're asking for this year. And big part of the transfer station, we had funded, I think, half of it last year, trying to fund it half of it this year to replace our the shell and siding of the transfer station. And on to DCP. Playgrounds, there was a bigger ask for the Maybee Playground, which is, if anybody looks at the the high cost of playgrounds, we we have some that just are in dire need of replacement. We're going to look at the our complete sort of inventory of of playgrounds and 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 where we really need to replace some of this. And we're going to try to do this in a coordinated way, and we're going to start to do that this year. And then paddle tennis court is in need of repair, resurfacing. And we have some ADA work we need to comply with over at the community center in the back of the building for grading and accessibility down to the field, the long field. And then some of the other, the showmobile replacement, which I think, Mark, I think it's well over nineteen ninety eight, it's that it's it's way past its useful life and and dire need of of replacement. So we're asking for funding here. And then normally, we our park furnishings, we we allocate about ten thousand dollars a year to for replacement, repair work. And then just our la, my last slide with utility funds and some of what I've highlighted already. And what that increase is comprised of, or what the ask is comprised of, and some of the increases and decreases. And that is the end. I know I know you were asking when it would end, and now we're there. So I will entertain any questions from council. Again, May eighteenth is the right now, or will be our scheduled public hearing on the on the twenty twenty one budget. So I'm I'm here to try to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Michael, for for an excellent presentation. And thank you to all of the city staff for the work that's been done on this and to Tammy for spending a lot of time on this as well. I will open it up now if anyone has any comments or questions for Michael. I can't see everyone, so if you can raise your hands, council members, because with the presentation thing up, I can't see hands. Okay, Councilmember Hairston, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you Administrator Rogers. Extremely thorough and really thoughtful. I know, very, very transparent. And I just have two really minor questions. Can you remind me, where does the cost for the Westfield health, regional health that we pay for? Where does that show up? Is that under appropriations?
Is that? Board Board of Health, there's a line item for the Board of Health, and you'll be able to see more detail in the in the budget.
Okay. And then when we went from two hundred full and part time down to now, we're down to one ninety eight. I saw there was a variation between full time and part time. Are the, is that a full time equivalent to get us to the to 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 that one ninety eight? Or?
Yeah, so that that's
That's like a headcount number. So we we still are in that ballpark just by?
So the the one ninety eight is full time, part time, permanent employees. It's down one from last year at one ninety nine. There were some that we, last year, if you recall, we had converted, and this is when we got through the bu, budget process last year, we converted some of the the part times to full times. For example, communications officer, there was a program supervisor in the DCP, for example. So some of the, that's where you see some of the the part timers that's gone to full time. And then some of the of part full time positions that we eliminated, we're also explaining that one slide. And that's sort of the the net effect with all of what was going on and with personnel last year and some into this year in parking that we're not funding. It it it, the the net effect is down one.
And is that also, I know we got some of the school crossing guards. And is that some of the part time? Because I saw it went up to twenty seven, then it went down.
They're they're not included, Councilwoman, they're 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 a temporary seasonal worker. And you'll 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 see the number, they're not listed out in in the numbers. Although it gets somewhere like I recall, twenty eight to thirty is is the range. But you'll just see a line item in there, crossing guards, and they're, those are just temporary seasonal workers.
So we're not experiencing any kind of real attrition. We're 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 staying pretty flat with that. And then the last two questions. Can you remind me with the sewer utility significant increase? Was that due to the plastics, why we had to do something? What was, what was the joint commission asking us?
Are you talking about the joint meeting capital budget increase?
Under, yes, the joint meeting, because it's under the sewer utility.
The sewer utility, right. So it it, what you'll see every three years is a major contribution for their three year capital plan. So all the participating communities in the joint meeting is based on their 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 portionment, and 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 certainly Director Schrager could get into more of that in greater detail. But there's, they have their capital budget, and based on the overall, you know, your respective percentage of your community and what what you send to the joint meeting, they determine this amount. And that tends to be every three years, you'll see that sort of nine hundred thousand or eight hundred thousand dollar number, depending on what the, you know, the size of their capital budget. But that that's, that's the increase this this year.
Okay, okay. And then the last one is we, I know our reduction in municipal court fees is due to we don't have the traffic because of COVID. And so your, your, was that a part of the three-year average you were allowed to? No.
No, so we, I think we realized. It was close to the 250 number that I think we came in last year for that. And I just want to be accurate with the revenue. But it, it's, it's down significantly, as I, as I stated, about 250. I think we had just a 400. Give me one second, Councilwoman, I can, I think last year, we were anticipating about 450,000. We realized 239, a little over 239,000. For the reasons you can understand, there was just much lower traffic, but parking enforcement wasn't there. So that, that, that's certainly all that contributed to the significant reduction in that, that revenue source. We are not doing a three-year average that we could do. We're only anticipating about 200,000. I, I want to, I'd rather be conservative in that. We just, right now, what, based on the numbers I have from the court, the first couple of months, it doesn't seem like it's, it's that much different from what we were experiencing last year in the fourth quarter. So I would rather be conservative in that. And certainly if that, I, it's hard to predict, you know, fines and how that gets processed through the court. So.
It doesn't affect our, our judge and prosecutor costs for those staff that we have since the fees are down. It's, there's no relationship between?
No, I, I, I don't look at it that way. There's costs that we have through our shared service agreement with New Providence. And we pay for, we, we do, we do pay for our part-time judge, because that's our judge that serves, you know, Summit Community. And that's what you see as a salary and wage line in, in the municipal court section. But, you know, there's costs associated with, with those services. And, you know, whatever the revenues are that we can collect and, and, and maintain in our budget, we do, and that just reflects that revenue number.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Ades, do you have questions?
Yes, no, no, actually, I do not have questions. But I just, because we go through this so much in finance, and I just wanted to thank Michael and his team. We, I've been watching and working with them all year long, masks on at a distance. And, and I know it's caused sleepless nights for all of them to try to bring these numbers in. And certainly things like the American Rescue Act and CARES have helped a great deal. And there was a lot of time in the spring of last year when we were deathly worried about how this would work out. So we, you know, we're not in a great position, but we're in a way better position than we would have been. And, and that's really partly because of the federal government, but mostly because of the keen eye that Michael, Tammy, and all the department heads put into their work every single day. So I just want to thank every one of them, because it's an honor, really, an honor to work with them. So no questions from me.
Great. I agree with everything you just said, Mayor. Go ahead, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Similarly to Mayor Ades, I just wanted to say, as a former Chair of the Finance Committee, I know how much work goes into preparing this budget in a normal year. And I just really want to thank Greg and Danny, you, Marjorie, and Nora, as well as the city staff, especially Michael and Tammy, for putting in a budget. I mean, it's, it's remarkable in this year of COVID and all the lost revenues and all the challenges of this last year that Summit households are going to be, experience a decrease in their taxes. I mean, that's, that's just absolutely remarkable. It's been a priority for this council to hold tax, taxes flat for our residents while still providing like very high levels of service. We've only been able to do that because of our remarkable city staff and all the work that's gone into this. Certainly, we do thank the federal government for recognizing, you know, and President Biden for recognizing that municipal municipalities and local governments needed that support, given the challenges of their last year. But really, it's, it's just, it's really remarkable to sit here and look at these numbers and realize that we're going to be looking at, residents are going to see paying less taxes this year after everything we've been through. And I, I really can't, you know, I, I have no words. It's, it's an amazing accomplishment. And you, all of you on the Finance Committee should be incredibly proud. And I'm proud to work with you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Sullivan, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I too want to thank everyone. It is an exhaustive process. It is my first year on finance, so it was a lot of, it was a steep learning curve for me. But I, I just saw all the work that goes into it. And I really want to thank our department heads. One thing I want to highlight about this budget, and it might seem like a little thing, but I just want the public to know, we exhaust the life out of our assets, our vehicles, our computers, our equipment, our showmobile long overdue. So just so the public knows, we're not recklessly spending money on these kinds of things. We exhaust the life out of these things. I have one question for Administrator Rogers. I'm, I'm just curious about the debt service, that the increase in the debt service. Can you just explain that with interest rates being so low?
Yeah, it, it, Councilmember, it, it really comes down to, you know, you, you have to look at past debt service, you know, past debt that we've taken out. And just so the public understands, it's, it's our capital budget and the project and all the infrastructure that we need to maintain in our buildings and, and, and our fleet and anything else that we do with our, our fields. And so a, a lot is accumulated. And it's the way our long-term debt is structured. Right now, we have our 19 and 20 capital budgets that we've approved that are in a short term. So short, from a short-term basis, Councilmember Sullivan, there, there, our, our rates are good and low, as you, as you know, and you see out there with where the, the two-year, five-year, 10-year is. And when we do, do any type of short-term financing, we, we, our, our, our rates are just ridiculously low, quite frankly. And our longer-term debt is, is sort of locked in until you have a call option. And that's what we're going to look at this year to see if there's a potential refunding opportunity. And then whether we want to take our, our capital budgets from the last couple of years, things that we're considering, and certainly with the firehouse, going to be up for discussion soon. That was a past-approved capital budget project. We, we want to look at what the, the long-term financing opportunities are. Because a lot of that right now is just past, past budget, past capital budget approvals and authorizations and expenditures. So that's where we are. It's just the schedule of that. If you look at a long-term schedule, which is in our budget report, I'm very transparent about that. You can see it all, all of our issuances, what are, are, what is tied to a particular issuance, what our, our principal and interest payments are, looking out over the remaining duration of our, our long-term issuance is what that looks like. And then coupled with the short-term notes that we still have outstanding, does not, this year's debt service is not related to anything this year. And it's not even related to, it's, last year, there would be an interest payment, because we, we, our short-term notes are just interest up until the third year, when there's a principal payment due. So we want to, we just want to look at this. And, and, and rates are very favorable for, for long-term financing as well as short-term financing. So we're fortunate with it in that respect. But the reality is that this, it, it's all past capital budget and debt financing that is leading to these increases, which we've been talking about for the last five years or so, since I've been here. And, and producing these budgets, I've, I've been a very, I've gone out of my way, I think, in the capital budget presentations, as well as just the overall discussion around this issue. And, and just sort of notifying, you know, everyone, just bringing that awareness around it. And, and, and so we just have to manage that the best of our ability, which I think we have done a very good job. It's just, unfortunately, this, this year and next year, we're seeing some increases that are not necessarily a great, but we'll manage it and we'll continue to manage it over the coming years to, to just sort of minimize the burden.
Okay, moving on, Councilmember Naidoo, you had comments?
Thank, thank you, Council President. I will be short, because I know the, it's getting late in the hour. I just want to thank the entire finance team and all the department heads for the, the hard work that it's gone, especially in the last two years, to get the budget the way that we have. I, I agree with Councilwoman Little that if people thought that, you know, in this current circumstances, there would be a reduction in taxes overall. That's incredible. You know, that's a great benefit to, to the residents in this town. I did want to just follow, just one question on this American Rescue Act that we also thank Council Congressman Melonowski for. Michael, I noticed that there was half attributed this year and, and half for next year. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yes, that's correct. And that's just the way it's set up, is that you'll, you'll have your, you know, the full allotment was, was, I think, 2.15 million. You're going to receive 50% this year and 50% next year.
Okay, so, so next year also, we will benefit from the American Rescue towards our budget. Do you have a ballpark of what impact that had as far as percentage-wise? If we didn't have that money, what that would have meant? Do you, do you have a sense?
Yeah. So for, for looking at just what a, what a, when we talk about the tax rate and what one cent would be. So you, you, what one cent is the equivalent to a little over $320,000 this year. So when, when you do the math on that million, it's over three cents of what that, that impact is. It's significant. And so that, that's, that's the real impact, and that was the loss. I mean, we, we could easily attribute, this is a revenue loss issue for us this year from last year and going into this year. So that's a big part right now of what the U.S. Treasury is trying to provide guidance on, which has been the subject of much debate and even, I think, litigation from the states, because I think it's more of an issue for states and how they interpret that, that act. But right now, we're still waiting on the guidance from the U.S. Treasury as well as the state. And so after we introduce this budget this evening, I, I think, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll probably hear something with the coming weeks. But to your, to your question, Councilman, it, it is over three cents of what that, that helps out with our budget. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Michael, and thank you again for everyone for getting us to where we are. Thanks.
All right, so I think, I think we've exhausted the questions and comments portion of, of this presentation. Thank you again, City Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Council President, and the rest of the, the mayor and common council for allowing me to present this. And thank you again for everyone's efforts, financing, capital projects committees, and, and all the department heads. Thank you.
All right, so now we're moving on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first ordinance for hearing?
Yes. Ordinance number 21-3233. Ordinance to amend the lease agreement between the Reeves Reed Arboretum, Inc. and the City of Summit.
Okay, Councilmember Allen, this is all yours.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance, which was introduced last week, amends the lease agreement between the Reeves Reed Arboretum and the City of Summit. Reeves Reed Arboretum applied for a grant to the Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres, which aims to extend accessibility of the arboretum to the public for outdoor recreation. In order to qualify for Green Acres Grant, it requires that a development project secures a lease for at least 25 years, thereby requiring the current lease of the arboretum to be extended to September 6, 2046. The arboretum has been a wonderful sanctuary for our residents and beyond. And I'm very excited that we're not only expanding access for its use, but we're preserving green space that is an integral part of this community. I move to open this hearing.
I second.
All right, so are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so with that, I will declare this hearing closed. And now we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 21-3233. Ordinance to amend the lease agreement between Reeves Reed Arboretum, Inc. and the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Councilmember Allen.
Yep, we just had this short hearing on this proposed ordinance. I'm sure that's welcome at this time of night. And I move the ordinance for final consideration.
I second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so now we are moving on to ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you read the first one, please?
Yes. ID number 7833, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Police Regulations, Section 3-8, Noise Restrictions, Subsection 3-8.1, Noise Prohibitions to Provide for a Hardship Waiver to the Gas-Powered Leaf Blower Pilot Program.
Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. I, as we discussed at the last meeting, when we had a hearing on the pilot program for the leaf blower ban, in hearing from members of the public and some of the businesses in town, we wanted to make sure that we minimize any undue hardship from this ban. And so we discussed in the, in our Capital Projects Committee that we would institute a hardship waiver as an amendment to the noise ordinance, and specifically to the pilot ban of gas-powered leaf blowers. So that is what we are doing tonight. We are introducing this, and the hearing will be at the first May meeting. This application, it's, it's, I want to explain that this hardship waiver is for a specific hardship that someone might have, either resident or business, during the three-month period. It is not designed to be a blanket ban for the entire period of, of the, of the pilot program. It's instead designed so that if there is some specific use that is needed during the period of the ban, that we can address it. So there will be an application online, which will include, but not limited to the name of the applicant, the reason for the waiver, including the hardship that might result, the duration of the waiver sought, the address, and a description of any interim measures that can be taken. And it's, will be acted upon by the Director of Community Service. And the, and the terms of the waiver will be specifically crafted to narrowly address the reason for the hardship. So this would be for a, a purpose that, you know, it would be for, you know, you might be able to use a gas-powered leaf blower on one day for a specific purpose if there was a large-scale project, or if there was something that wasn't anticipated and, and that you would have an undue hardship because of the ban, because of your specific circumstances. So those will be acted on. The details are all in the ordinance. And at this time, I will ask that we introduce, allow for.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Wait, wait, roll call, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to resolutions, we have some final.
President, we still have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Obviously getting late. Okay, could you go ahead and read that, the title, please?
Sure. ID number 7837, an ordinance of the City of Summit in Union County, New Jersey, amending required exterior mechanical equipment setbacks in certain residential zones as established in Article 14, Design and Performance Requirements, Part II, Zoning of Chapter 35 Development Regulations Ordinance, right, Development Regulations of the City of Summit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. For those of you who have been following along, you'll know that we have put in place a new DRO for the city over the last year that involved a lot of work in, in looking at wholesale, looking at the Development Regulation Ordinances, which are basically our zoning ordinances. At the, as, as we put this into place, we have acknowledged this is a living document. And we have discussed that there will be a quarterly review to make sure that there's any amendments or changes need to be, need to be done. However, this is taking place outside of that normal quarterly review, because. within the new DRO, there's a section which which changed the side yard setbacks for air conditioners from five feet from five feet to 10 feet. And that was to bring them in line with the setbacks for generators. And it, you know, it seemed like a great idea at the time. However, that has resulted in a hardship for many residences. And as a result, there have been approximately 15 variance requests that have been filed with the planning board with more to come. And if we waited for the normal quarterly review, that wouldn't take place until after the summer months and would be a hardship for all the asking for this variance. This was inadvertent hardship that was caused by the new DRO. And at this time, we have recommended by our city planner and our zoning officer that that change be reverted back to the original five-foot setback. And so we'd like to address this one change at this time so that these this can take place before the summer and, you know, it won't cause hardship to residents who are looking to put in air conditioning units for this coming summer. So I ask that we open this ordinance. We allow for introduction of this ordinance at this time.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes, motion carries. Now we're going to move on to the resolutions. Okay, Councilmember Barton, would you like to start with Finance number one?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7709. This resolution authorizes the introduction of the 2021 municipal parking and sewer operating budgets and establishes a hearing date. As outlined in the presentation by Administrator Rogers, this also includes our capital improvement plan. I will have a lot to say at the hearing, but I will start off with three things that I'd like to say now. First is thank you to Mayor Rades, Council President Fox, Councilmember O'Sullivan for your work on the Finance Committee. Thank you to Michael Rogers, Tammy Baldwin, and all of the city staff for their incredible grace under pressure. Municipal finance is complex in a normal year, adding in several different aid packages with money distributed for different things in different ways and at different times has made this an extremely challenging process for the second year in a row. This staff has worked weekends and, as usual, gone above and beyond in many ways to get us to where we are today. So thank you. Second is how we communicate about the budget is critically important, especially this year. We're going to be utilizing the Communications Office in several different ways. As usual, we will be sending the budget snapshot to your mailbox. We will be sharing the budget presentation you saw this evening via social media and the presentation and the budget itself in its entirety is available on the city website. In addition, we're going to be highlighting key pieces of the budget snapshot via social media over the course of the 28 days between now and the hearing. Then, once we have the budget hearing and adopt the budget, we're going to hold a Facebook Live to discuss the budget and answer any questions that people have about it. There is no clearer statement of the values of a government than how it spends money. So I encourage everyone to please look at the budget, read the goals listed, and please reach out to us to ask questions and attend the hearing to tell us what you think. I'm really looking forward to what I hope will be a robust discussion about this budget. And third, finally, tonight, we have discussed and will still speak about several other very important topics. But I want to make sure it's not lost that this year, the total tax bill in Summit will decrease. I'll say that again. The total tax bill in Summit will decrease. With that, Council President, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, and are there any comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Or maybe we don't do comments on this. A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little? Ms. Little?
Frozen.
She's frozen. Okay, we'll come back to Ms. Little. Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Back to you, Ms. Little. We're voting on the resolution.
I think my watch went out for a minute, but yes, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so so the motion carries and we'll have the hearing on the 18th of May. So moving on to Finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7835. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the temporary municipal operating budget. This has been a common occurrence through the end of last year and beginning of this year. Because we are adopting the official budget later than usual, this is the legal mechanism we must use to continue to fund the government until the official adoption of the budget next month. This resolution adds $649,000 to the temporary municipal budget, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
So once again, this is, is this one where we do comments, Madam Clerk?
Good, you can comment on this.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on this one? Okay, hearing and no comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none, all those in, oh, roll call vote, please.
Good catch. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries on that one. And go ahead with Finance number three, Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7836. This resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the Uniform Construction Code Operating Budget. As you'll recall, at the last council meeting, we voted to increase UCC fees. But this measure is similar to the last one in that it is not actually an emergency, but a legal mechanism to keep funding this budget. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So we're now moving on to Finance number four, Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7828. This resolution authorizes the Finance Office to utilize a three-year average calculation for revenue from the Family Aquatic Center. This is something the State Division of Local Government Services is allowing as a direct result of the COVID-19 pandemic, virtually decimating some revenue line items. The Family Aquatic Center had approximately $489,000 in revenue in 2018, $521,000 in 2019, and then a big drop to $282,000 in 2020. This year, the budget that was introduced earlier reflects a three-year average projected revenue of $415,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so I think we have our last finance resolution. Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7829. This resolution authorizes the certification of availability of funds related to the Summit Free Public Library's submission of a grant to the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Act Grant Program. This resolution certifies that $31,170.20 is available. This money was part of a capital budget appropriation for the library several years ago. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to Capital Projects. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. The first Capital Projects Resolution is number 7822, and it's to sorry, support the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. This program is in its fourth year, has been incredibly successful program to recognize our veterans in Summit. We are looking to add 30, the committee is looking to add 32 additional banners at 16 locations. Those are being finalized, but will be adjacent to the CRBD, the Downtown Business District. This is had overwhelming support from the entire community and participation by residents, and we are very, you know, honored to be able to support this program once again. Installation period will remain the same, which will be Memorial Day until August 15. And all costs are funded through the Hometown Heroes Trust account with some support from DPW workers for the installation of the banners. So I ask enthusiastically ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I won't take too long, but it reminds me, you know, so many years ago when I was Council President and Matt Gould was with us, our dear friend. And this all started when Matt and I were on a train ride with a mutual friend of ours who came up, Mike Arline, came up with this idea and said, hey, why don't we do this? And put it in place. And I remember Councilwoman Fox scrambling around with Paul Cascase, trying to get everything done, but we were able to get it that first year. And what an incredible program it has been since then. Talk about a program that brings the community together in celebration of those who have served this country. And so I enthusiastically support it. I am so glad that we have been able to not only continue it, but expand it year after year. So thank you.
Council President, if I can, I should also, I would like to just mention that the the resident who got this all started is Mike Arline, and he has put a tremendous amount of time and effort into this program, and we all owe him a debt of thanks. And I didn't want to let us vote on this without saying thank you and recognizing the work he's put into this program.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. And yes, I can attest to the amount of work that Michael's put into this program over the years. It's, I think it's a terrific program. And I think the thing that's most special about it is it brings it's brought together our veterans in in the community, people who didn't know each other, who've kind of been brought together by this program. And and that was that photo opportunity, that first year was so special when everyone was together at the Memorial Day Parade, you know, before the parade. So I think this has been a real positive thing for our community. So I'm very pleased. And I also want to thank all the DPW workers who spend a lot of time organizing and getting this all pulled together and and Aaron Schreger for scrambling because it always seems like we're doing it at the very last minute, but it always gets done and gets done beautifully. So thank you to everyone. And if there aren't any other comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead with Capital Projects number two.
Projects number two is Resolution number 7777, and this is to appoint the Director of the Department of Community Services. And I am very, I'm thrilled to put forward this resolution. As many of you know, I I spoke about Paul Cascase's retirement when he retired after many, many years of service to the city. And at that time, I said, I couldn't imagine the city of without Paul Cascase. Well, now I can. We still miss Paul terribly. But as the Chair of the Capital Projects Committee, I'm just, I'm I'm thrilled and honored to put forward Aaron Schreger as the Permanent Director of the Department of Community Services. He's been Acting Director over the last six months or so. He has been stepping into Paul's shoes even before that. And I really, I I could not possibly have imagined that someone could fill Paul's shoes so well and so ably during this incredibly challenging year and time. Aaron has more than risen occasion. I am honored to work with him. I mentor, I look up to him, and he has just really gone so far beyond anything I think any of us expected or, you know, I guess we expected it because we knew how great he was, but he really has gone even even further. So I I really can't say enough about how excited I am to put forward this resolution and ask that we approve it.
Second, second. Okay, are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Aaron, I can't tell you how pleased we are to be putting this forward tonight. And with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's official. Congratulations, Aaron.
Congratulations, Aaron.
Thank you.
Okay, and now moving on, we've got Capital Projects number three.
Capital Projects number three is number 7778, and this is to appoint the City Engineer for the Department of Community Services. And I am, I am also thrilled to do, to put forward this resolution. Rick Matias has been the Acting City Engineer during the same time period. He has done an incredible job. And we are, we are very lucky as a city to have him step into this position and take over as the City Engineer. So I also, I'm just very enthusiastic about all my resolutions tonight, but I am also very happy to put forward this resolution for approval.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Once again, I am very pleased that we're putting this forward. And I, I think Rick will, Rick has been doing a terrific job and will continue to do so. And so with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's official. Congratulations, Rick, if you're out there watching. And so we have one, wait, we have two more. So Capital Projects number four, Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution number 7854, and this is to authorize the appointment of Keith Kennard to be the Affordable Housing Committee Liaison to the Housing Authority and Union County Unity Development Revenue Sharing Committee. So as we discussed at the last meeting, the longtime director of, Executive Director of our Housing Authority has left the position, and the Housing Authority has appointed Keith Kennard as the interim director. And so he will be taking over these two positions as part of his responsibilities as the Acting Director of the Housing Authority. We welcome Keith Kennard to the city. I haven't had the honor of meeting him yet, but everyone who has has been incredibly impressed. And I think our Housing Authority is going to be in great hands with him. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have one resolution on the Capital Projects Agenda that is, that's been added from the floor, Capital Projects number five. Councilmember Little?
I'm not sure. I'm I'm confused.
Okay, that was the the Parkline, the Parkline Earth Day Celebration? Do you have that one, or you want me to just do it?
Can you please do it? I don't think I received that one. I mean, we did, I apologize for the confusion, but I don't, I don't see that.
That's not a problem. I can do it. Okay, so we have, unless unless Councilmember Naidoo wants to, since it's out of your committee. Me?
Go ahead. I'll second it.
All right, good. All right. So basically, what we have is, this was a a resolution that was added from the floor to for the Parkline Foundation to hold an Earth Day event at the Summit Parkline on Saturday, April 24. And there will be planting a butterfly garden, and there'll be photographer and some other activities. So this should be a great day to celebrate the Earth Day and see Phase One of the Parkline. So I move this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second that.
Okay, so any comments? Councilmember O'Sullivan, if you have anything to add, since we're doing this one on the fly, please feel free.
No, but I I do think it's a wonderful event. As part of the 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 Earth Day cleanup that I did a couple of weeks ago, I was over there, and it is coming together very nicely. I encourage everybody to go over, plant some seeds for the butterfly garden. There have been just tremendous amount of work being done. I will be over there. I think I dragged my wife over with me, too. So looks like a fun day.
Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, um, are there any other comments? Okay, um, and no comments from the public, so, uh, then, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, three Safety and Health Matters. Go ahead, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. Uh, I am introducing, uh, Resolution ID Number Seven Eight Zero Zero to accept a donation of funds to the Police Department, um, from the Summit Police Athletic League in the amount of five thousand dollars. Uh, the Summit PAL prides itself in its involvement with the community and the programs we are able to support. This is a terrific one, the Trading Card Program. It exemplifies the type of community outreach that benefits our residents and especially our youth. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Uh, comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, okay, moving on to Safety and Health Number Two, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'm introducing the, uh, Asking for Approval of Resolution Seven Eight Two Five that will authorize the submission to the New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety for the Click It or Ticket Mobilization Grant Application and to execute, uh, the grant agreement. And this is an annual grant that we apply for that is used to support officer overtime costs to participate in seatbelt enforcement campaigns. And so I, uh, respectfully ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Um, okay, comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so we have our last Safety and Health Resolution, go ahead, Councilmember Hairston.
Okay, our last Safety Resolution, Number Seven Eight Two Four, to authorize submission to the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the Bodyworn Camera Grant Application and to execute the grant agreement. And, uh, this is a, um, uh, resolution to, to apply for, uh, the law enforcement agencies in the per, purchase of bodyworn cameras, ancillary equipment and storage. And, um, you know, I don't know if there's anything in particular the police chief wants to say about these. I'm remembering you may have mentioned that we're doing an overhaul of these and I don't have that, um, with me now. If it's something worth mentioning, uh, police chief could, I could ask you to.
Perhaps you'd like to, Councilmember Hairston, do you want to move the resolution and then we'll, uh, we'll call on, on the chief to, to respond?
I would like to do that.
Yes, just so we don't lose track of where we are.
Sure. So I ask to approve this resolution.
I second.
Okay, so now, uh, Chief Bartolotti, did you have anything you wanted to tell us about this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Uh, just to clarify, this is part of a statewide multimillion-dollar grant that, uh, took effect January first of this year. It is a sixty-month grant, uh, bringing eligibility to departments throughout the state to apply for grant money to either purchase new or to replace, uh, bodyworn cameras. Uh, the Police Department, uh, in Summit had a bodyworn camera started in two thousand seventeen, so we are ineligible to apply for this grant under the new purchase, but we are eligible to apply for replacement, uh, purchase of our body camera system. So we are submitting this application with the anticipation of, uh, funding availability for two thousand twenty-three.
Um, Chief, my understanding is that all of the officers wear bodyworn cameras, is that correct?
That is correct. All of our uniformed personnel are equipped with bodyworn cameras and our supplemental personnel, non-uniformed, also have access to cameras as well.
And the vehicles also have cameras?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments for, before taking a vote? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and now we're moving on to the Consent Agenda. We usually take this as one, as a whole and vote on it unless anyone has anything that they want to pull out and discuss. Um, if I don't hear anyone saying that, well, uh, do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. So we're now moving on to Councilmembers' new business and comments. Does anyone have anything they want to say at the end of this very, very long night? Okay.
Council President, could I just talk maybe one more minute about the budget? Just need to get to ten fifty and then we're.
No, no, no. No, ten fifty.
No, no, no.
One minute I need. One more minute of the budget, of budget.
Okay, we're not doing that. All right, so, all right, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries.